Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, June 24th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colletti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. There are none to approve tonight. Next up is additions to the agenda. We have none. So we move on to item D, which includes presentations and public input. So the first item under this agenda section is our fire department promotions. I'd like to welcome members of the fire, Urbana Fire Department, their friends and family who are here to celebrate three promotions within the fire department.
Good evening, council, members of the public. My name is Demond Date. I'm the fire chief of Urbana Fire Department, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Each opportunity that we get to come before you and recognize the men and women, the dedication of the men and women of our department for the, for arriving at this moment is truly an honor. We get an opportunity to come before you and celebrate the accomplishment and promotion of the men and women of our department. Tonight, what we have is two promotions, three promotions. We have two individuals who are being promoted from firefighter to the rank of engineer and one individual who's being promoted from candidate to that, a full-fledged firefighter. I can assure you that when we come before you, we don't just come down here to place a badge on their chest so they can wear that around in front of their uniform as a formality. They come before you to take an oath and give a public and solemn promise to uphold the values and of our profession. And more specifically for that, those roles that they'll hold within the department. So tonight, the first person that I want to bring up is Engineer Chase Jones. Chase Jones is a six-year veteran of the Urbana Fire Department. He is an advanced EMT, and he is also a member of the MABUS 28 Division Technical Rescue Team. Tonight, after giving his oath, Chase will be pinned by his mother. Where is she at? Ms. Monica Jones.
So everyone can see you. Okay? You can just repeat after me. I, Chase E. Jones.
I, Chase E. Jones.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
It will be so hereby affirmed.
So hereby affirmed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stefan Burt is a five-year veteran of the Urbana Fire Department. In those five years, he has become a paramedic, bless you. He is also a member of our EMS service officers. He's a member of the Uniform Committee, and recently, he just finished his master's degree in fire administration. And this evening, Burt will be pinned by his coach, Mr. Jim Gramley.
I, Stefan D. Burt.
I, Stefan D. Burt.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitutions and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So hereby affirmed.
So hereby affirmed. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And last, but certainly not least, we have Mr. Zachary Brooks. So Zack started with us last year, and since then, he has completed his fire academy at the Illinois Fire Service Institute. And this February, he just completed his probation. So now Zack is a full-fledged firefighter. Tonight, he will be pinned after taking his oath. He'll be pinned by his wife. Where is she? Ms. Shelby Brooks.
Just repeat after me. I, Zachary B. Brooks.
I, Zachary B. Brooks.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of firefighter.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of firefighter.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So hereby affirmed.
So hereby affirmed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief? These have been signed, and if the firefighter, I think, can I each sign theirs and get it back to the clerk's office? I'm going to keep my pen. Congratulations again. Thank you for your service.
I believe Chris will introduce the speaker.
This evening, founder and executive director Dr. Stephanie Cockrell and youth development leader Nicole Muffet from The Well Experience will be making a presentation entitled, "Our Community, Our Voice: Well Kids Speak." This presentation includes quotes from staff, children, and family members at The Well Experience, expanding on the concerns they have about introducing additional policing in our community. And with that introduction, Dr. Cockrell, you have the floor.
Make sure the green light is on and pull it close. Those are not very sensitive mics.
There we go.
Perfect.
Okay. I also want to mention that we have Erie Berry, who is one of our youth development leaders at The Well, and in the very back, our board president is standing there. Happy to see her in the room as well. So Ms. Nicole, who is one of our lead teachers for 4th and 5th grade students, is going to lead this presentation, and with the limited time, I'm going to save mine for public comment. Thank you.
Make sure your microphone's on and speak into it, please. Bring it close. Oh, it is Nana. Thank you much. I'm wondering if somebody could help me start the slideshow. I'm having a hard time. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Marlin, council members, and fellow residents of Urbana. My name is Nicole Muffet. I am a resident of the 4th Ward, a PhD candidate in sociology, and a youth development leader at The Well Experience located on Philo Road. While my training in statistics, survey, and interview methodologies is useful in understanding the shortcomings apparent in the Barry Dunn Report, I recognize that several other Urbana residents, and I recognize that several other Urbana residents have come forward to talk about their well-thought concerns with this report. My training on social inequalities, including race, class, and gender, is useful for explaining how the entire system of policing in the United States is rooted in anti-black racism and the extraction of labor from the impoverished, both of which are populations identified by UPD, for increased policing. Instead of talking of this, I'm here to advocate for my students and all of the children who attend The Well. As an organization, we are asking Urbana City Council to approve a budget only if it limits increased policing and eliminates entirely a substation in the Philo District. The Well Experience serves Black families and children, connecting them to resources, helping them through trauma and conflict, and providing a safe space where Blackness is celebrated every day. We comprise a trauma-informed staff that regularly handles tense disagreements, both minor and major, with a foundational belief that it is access to resources and strong relationships, not the threat of punitive action that resolves crises. While we have programs for children of all ages, I work with our 4th and 5th graders. I see the fear, concern, and distrust they have towards policing and the surveillance in their communities. As a woman who benefits from the privilege of whiteness, I recognize that the interactions that I have with the police are not harmful generally. At the same time, I see that my innocent children fear for their well-being anytime they see a police officer or a car. Their fear is real and valid. Many have extended networks where their friends and family have been treated poorly by the police. The decision to concentrate policing in areas with higher rates of poverty and higher Black populations demonstrates that this fear is justified. For the rest of this time, I would like you to watch a video. It features the voices of our children. Our children were not coached or pressured to speak. We simply asked them to talk about how they feel about the possibility of a new substation near The Well. They chose to do audio recordings as several students expressed fear of retaliation if their faces were associated with their words. While they are speaking, you will see pictures and videos of everyday life at The Well, filled with learning, joy, and celebration. Council, I implore you to vote against a budget that would make my students' fears more intimate and realized than they already are. Instead, I hope to see funds used to provide Urbana residents with the resources many so desperately need. It is through community and resources that violence is resolved and trauma is healed. Thank you.
Honestly, I think that we don't have any business having, like, I feel like, a police station. Honestly.
Oh, it doesn't turn the volume up. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm so bad at this.
Honestly, I think that we don't have any business having, like, I feel like, a police station closer to us because of the fact that, like, I guess it's just so much trauma connected with, like, people are coddling, but specifically Black people towards, to the police, I think, kind of like, doesn't put anybody at ease. Because at the end of the day, yes, you want the violence to stop, but if you're, like, adding more violence to the community, then is it really stopping? And then also, I think that, I feel like, we really just have to get to the root of the problem. Like, why is there so much violence in the community? And once you get to that, then that's when you find alternatives, because I don't think that just pushing police in neighborhoods where obviously nobody's comfortable in it is not, it's not going to make it better. It might make it worse, because, you know, boycotting and, like, you know, like, just fighting back, and not even violently, but just fighting back.
I don't want them to put their, put the, um, police station there. I feel like they're going to arrest more Black people.
I don't want a police station near The Well, because I don't, I don't want them to hurt my friends or really anyone in The Well, because they are seasoned police, and they might hurt my friends, because they think harmless things are very harm, give, make lots of harm, so I don't want them to hurt my friends.
We should not have police here, just like, say, if one of us have our hood up and we have our headphones in and we can't hear, and they think we're the person, because we're annoying them, and then they end up, and we're just right by our house, and then they pull us over on our own yard, and they start arresting us, and our parents start coming, and then they, and then the cop pulls out, and you know what, and then starts, everybody get down. And personally, we already have a safe environment. We don't need more white police here, because what makes the other Black people mad and keep on making these things happen is because y'all keep arresting Black people for no reason. So y'all can't be saying that we're acting like criminals or we're acting like animals. Y'all started this way before this new generation started, and it's not a good way, because it can mess some people's futures up.
I think if they were to come, that they would think our shock on our walls and our floors outside of The Well would be vandalism, and they take some of our outfits as, oh, you're walking to the side of the street, you're going down the alley, you must've been doing stuff, or we're running at the park or something, running through the park or playing football, that they think, oh, y'all is roughhousing, all y'all know how to do is rough. So I think that if they were to come, there would be problems, no matter what. We wouldn't go outside. Even this one time, we went, we were supposed to go outside our tribe, but we weren't able to, because the police were arresting some little kid. So we didn't want to get into their way, but imagine that happening all day and every day. We'd be losing sunlight and losing the things, so why would we even come to The Well? We come to The Well to have fun and, like, feel safe, but when we can't even do that, there's no, no reason.
Never judge a book by its cover.
I feel like they should not do that, because it probably is going to be more and more, like, uh, bad, because I think there's going to be, like, police brutality and stuff like that, or like, uh, they assume somebody's doing bad, or like, if somebody put their phone away quickly, they might think it's, like, a gun or something. And I feel like they're going to also, like, uh, like, shoot, like, innocent people or, like, harm innocent people, because they're putting something up or like, or like, uh, walking off the store without a bag or seat or something. And some police are racist, because like, you know how, like, it's like, uh, slavery is over, but it's not over at the same time? Because they used to, like, be, like, stuff going to it, they didn't know, like, what the world was actually like. And I feel like that's what jail basically is. And if they already go know they're going to go to jail, they're going to keep doing it. I think personally, slavery is not over just because of you.
I feel as though as putting a police station in our community, right where kids enjoy their freedom and enjoy their safety in a well-loved community, can bring out suppressed emotions of trauma and fear that they didn't even know that they had. And I don't want to be accused of or mistaken of doing something that I had no intentions of doing, and it really breaks my heart. I'm in a love community. I am in a love place. I enjoy here, like, I have so many, like, family and friends here. There are a lot of kids my age that are here, and I don't want anything bad to happen, all because of who we are and who we stand for, and then other people's emotions and, like, bias, opinions falling onto us, like, we've done something wrong.
Thank you all.
Given the number of people here tonight and the very packed agenda we have before us, I'm going to ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes each. We have that provision in council rules. If there are 20 or more people who wish to speak, and I expect we'll have that this evening. So if anyone likes to address, wants to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hi, everybody. My name is Barbara Jones, and I am an Urbana resident. I'm speaking for myself only, none of the organizations I've worked with. But I have had some relevant experience in the relationship between policing and other community services. It began in New York City many years ago, when I served on the auxiliary police for the 24th Precinct in New York City, which was my home on the Upper West Side. While living in Chicago, I was a member of the Justice 2020 Network, and then until very recently, I volunteered here in Urbana and Champaign for the Trauma and Resilience Initiative, and as co-chair for the Race Relations Subcommittee for the Champaign County Community Coalition. I'm not representing their views. This is my, these are my observations from working with police and with other social service organizations. My experience tells me that since way back in New York City, police departments have evolved and changed. They're working much more closely with the communities. They hire different expertise, like social workers, which I applaud. But sometimes, police officers are needed. I recently worked with a young woman from Champaign who was shot several times and hospitalized at Carl for weeks. She and her five children were terrorized by a stalker at their home after the shooting. She received a lot of great social services. Some of the people are in the room tonight. I would call it a wraparound of great social services, but she needed the dedication of a Champaign police detective to find the stalker. This is something only police could handle, and I don't think the statistics accurately reflect the amount of time and dedication that this man put into finding this stalker. In New York City, all those years ago, I had a similar experience. I walked, I patrolled in my neighborhood, and as an auxiliary, I saw homeless people who needed medical help, people on drugs. Often, they had problems that evolved into violence that we, as auxiliaries, couldn't handle, including a lot of violence against women on the streets, and it needed to be handled by the police who worked with us. Finally, an Urbana friend of mine was a victim of domestic violence, and she has told me and others that the Urbana Police helped her move from being a victim to being a survivor. I have another friend, actually my husband, who says the Urbana Police helped an undocumented resident of Urbana, and that the outcome was very good. The department also supports LGBTQ+ residents, as far as I have witnessed. I totally support social services. I've worked and volunteered with them for decades, but sometimes, we need police. I believe Urbana hired Chief Boone for a reason, and that we should give him the resources to do his job. He attends the coalition meetings every month. He attended Jetty Rhodes at MLK Park last Saturday. Is that it?
That's it. You can submit it for the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara.
I am Stephanie Cockrell, Dr. Stephanie Cockrell, the founder and executive director of The Well Experience, and I've lived and worked in Urbana now for 17 years. I stand before you grateful for allowing us to do the presentation that we did representing our organization, The Well Experience, and also as a concerned resident of Urbana, deeply troubled by the decision to allocate a significant amount of funding to the Urbana Police Department. Given the historic and systemic issues our, our community has faced with law enforcement, this decision, to me, is perplexing and disheartening. For years, our community has grappled with systemic racism and its profound impact on our families and on our lives. The Black children and families in, of Urbana have experienced fear and distrust towards the police stemming from countless incidents of discrimination, harassment, and violence. This reality cannot be ignored or dismissed. It is a painful truth that our community makes us aware of all the time. The police have been clear about the areas they are targeting and the people they are targeting in those areas, Black people. The area they are looking at is more as, which is a high, considered a high-crime area, is right around The Well Experience and the community organizations that, a community organization that serves Black children and Black families every day. We assure you that the fear that they have is not displaced and it's not inappropriate. The team of, at The Well Experience and the families and children are daily experiencing these things and sharing this in our mental health sessions, in our trauma groups, and in the groups we have, the police come up more often than not. I cannot say every encounter with the police has been negative. I will say that last year, a caseworker from another organization called a police officer to The Well Experience. The caseworker admittedly, and unfortunately, was not aware of the historical trauma Black families have experienced at the hands of police. The caseworker shared what she had thought was going to be a good situation with having the police there. I immediately became upset. She was not aware that the team at The Well Experience had extreme expertise and would be able to de-escalate the situation. She also did not know that the police are generally our last resort. I'm happy to say that that situation turned out very well and did not end terribly for the team at The Well. However, I do want to say that The Well Experience is not asking, we, we're not crazy. We're not saying no police at all. We're saying police need proper training and need to be connected to social service agencies like The Well Experience in order to do the best job in this community, and we just don't need more. Thank you.
I want to start by saying thanks to the council for last week, coming together and improving the budget and letting us all know how, why you're voting the way that you did. You know, it's, I know it's a thankless job and that nobody in the public agrees on everything, and people in the council don't agree on everything, and I appreciate just putting the time and effort into continuing, working on it. I'd just like to echo the context of, this isn't a conversation about whether we abolish a police or add a bunch of officers. Like, people say we need police. Yeah, we do. We've been funding them more last year than ever before, so I just want to keep that in mind, that... Um, so I just want to keep that in mind, that not increasing police funding is not going to get rid of the police. You'll have just as much police service as you did last year. Uh, the budget's still not balanced. Looks like we're bringing in 47 million and 56 million going out. That's on page 53 if you're following along. Um, and anyone who votes yes, if you're running for public office again, is going to need to answer to why you passed a budget that wasn't balanced. Um, I'm disappointed to see two officers in the Community Engagement Center um, with no concrete programming, uh, no metrics for success, uh, no data to support the need and implementation. And the community members are objecting to that. Uh, perhaps more importantly, there are unintended consequences of, um, putting on the, uh, Training Sergeant and additional Deputy Police Chief. Um, one of the things I heard last week was that, uh, people here want to support the officers. And, uh, those two positions will cause a chain reaction of promotions. It will leave two less patrol officers on patrol. Those will eventually be filled, but in the short term, it will make the load of overtime higher on the Urbana Police Department. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that this is what you're signing up for if you agree to this without amending that. So, uh, yeah, what I, what I'd like to see is, um, you know, closer to a balanced budget. I know we're not going to get there, but if we could at least get closer, um, removing the leadership position so that we're not putting even more strain on our patrol officers, um, addressing the overtime issue. And I'd like to see that done by, uh, finishing the Barry Dunn Report and getting alternative police responders, or alternatives to police. Like alternative response means not police response by definition. Uh, so I'd like to see that happen. Um, last week I mentioned that there aren't a whole lot of, uh, economic incentives for small businesses. I just wanted to follow up on that. Staff got back to me quickly and explained that the only incentives are for, uh, buildings, like building houses or storefronts. There's nothing for any kind of modern business that, uh, doesn't have a physical presence. Thank you.
Hey, y'all. Okay, hope you can hear me. Um, my name is Jada Fulcher. Um, I am the VP of Outreach for the Community of Urbana-Champaign Cooperative Housing. I'm, I'm not technically representing them, but just to give you kind of some context about my interaction with the Champaign-Urbana area. I've been living here for six years. Um, yeah, and I really like it here. Uh, I just kind of wanted to talk and just like share what, um, I've, a lot of people have been sharing these last few weeks about like not increasing the police budget, something that is already really high, at least until we explore more of the alternative models. I do like pointing out that like alternative, it's alternative to what? It's alternative to police. That's y'all, that's what it means when we talk about alternative models. Um, at least that, that's, that's my understanding. I think maybe it's become a semantic issue. Um, but I would like for us to really explore that more before we're allocating like large swaths of money. We're not asking for no police. We're just asking for us to take a beat. And I mean, I think about the interaction that I've had even recently that, um, that involve police. Um, someone broke into my house two weeks ago. Um, stole stuff, uh, ate food. Um, a police report was filed. Um, but that's like not the thing that's aided us in this time. Me and I, like, I live in cooperative housing, so I have six roommates. So what aided us is, uh, going to our neighbors' houses and letting them know and keeping them informed because that's not a thing that happened. Um, it's, um, supporting each other and looking out for one another to like hopefully make sure this doesn't happen again. Um, it's me and my housemates like doing the work to like, um, I don't know, to put up signs, to like try to get some cameras in the house. Because like at the end of the day, you file that police report, but then it kind of just goes off into ether. And usually with stuff like this, you don't really hear anything. You just hope it doesn't happen again. Um, and I feel like there is a lot of money that's being put into policing that could be put into things that really do benefit communities. So we can do these things, like lift up each other, lift up ourselves. Um, and so in spaces where I've felt unsafe, I've been able to like be supported by friends because like even though all of my friends and I live under the poverty line, I live under the poverty line. Most people I know live under the poverty line. We're still able to support each other because of things like rental assistance or, um, all of these other government programs that allow us to live in, to live in this town that we all really love. So I just want that to be the fond everyone's mind that like oftentimes it's community that is supporting people in crisis, not police. Um, and I would love to see money going towards that instead of police. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Wallner. I am a resident, longtime resident of the city of Urbana, Ward 7. Um, I'm also a longtime, longtime public service employee, now retired, with 20 of those years devoted to community development work, beginning here with the city of Urbana, uh, nearly four decades ago. In that time, I worked closely with the community's nonprofit sector and understand the importance both of a strong government framework and a healthy, well-funded network of community organizations. Each has a role to play at which it excels. And the roles of each cannot be duplicated by the other. Ideally, with strong leadership and a clear strategic vision, they can work together to achieve excellent outcomes. The continuum of, of service providers to the homeless is one example of a public-private partnership that can work very well and does work very well in this community. That said, I'm here tonight to support the work of the Urbana Police Department. I've read the Barry Dunn Staffing Report. I applaud the city council for undertaking that study. I look forward to its, uh, conclusion. I've been following the council and community discussions around the police staffing issue. I regret that I have not come to speak in person before now. I trust those, the recommendations made by Chief Boone and the Police Department. As, as one of our prior speakers said, I would like to give him the chance to succeed, give him the tools that he needs to succeed. I particularly like the addition, not only of new sworn positions to fully staff the, the Police Department, but I love the idea of the Community Service Responder Unit to, to assume some of the workload of sworn officers and provide an alternative to address community service needs. I continue to support the allocation of funds for social services, which the city has done well for many, many years. I cannot stress enough that the Urbana Police Department provides a different role for this community, one that cannot be duplicated by social services and one that is badly needed. Thank you.
Evening. I'm Paul DeBevick. My home is in 303 West Nevada, Ward 4. I promise I'll take only a few minutes of your time. Alternate history is a type of writing that supposes some historical event did not happen, but a different plausible event did happen in its place. Alternate history then follows the consequences of that event. I have a brief example here. I, it really is brief. It's well under your time limit. It's just another day in 1980 when a Champaign Police Patrol car pulls up to 2007 West Kirby, an average home just west of Mattis Avenue in Champaign, Illinois. The patrol car parks on the street, not entering the driveway. There are no flashing lights. There's no siren. It is not a new venue for the Champaign Police Patrol. They've been called to 2007 West Kirby some 25 or 30 times in the past four years. Each call has been for a domestic disturbance. The horror of this situation is the burden of Chris Evans and his mother. The cause of this burden is her violent partner. It began at age 14, but now in 1980, Chris is 18. He realizes that four years of this horror...
Mr. DeBevick, we need to keep, uh, comments general and not directed toward or about any particular council member out of respect.
Well, then I have to stop. I would go on to say that it took considerable courage for Chris Evans to say to the police officer, to stay for 15 minutes while his mother and he could pack up their belongings and leave. But the police officer listening to dispatch said, "Sorry, son, we are short on patrol. I have to respond to an emergency. Things have settled down here. I'm sure you'll be okay." And the officer left. I'll not continue on this history. It was the full authority of a police officer that lifted Chris Evans and his mother from this horrible situation.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. DeBevick.
Mr. Evans acknowledged this.
Your time's up. Your time's up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janice Walker. I am a resident of Urbana. I'm going to be reading, um, a letter from James Tiger Corbin, who could not be here tonight. "Good evening, Mayor Marlin and council members. Recently in Urbana, two young men attempted to rob a local citizen at gunpoint. This led to a foot chase, ending with the arrest of these individuals by some of Urbana's dedicated police officers. First, I do want to commend the officers for their excellent work. Their service is deeply appreciated by citizens like James. However, I believe that if we had an alternative intervention program in place, such as violent crime interrupters on the ground, they could have identified and addressed the distress these young men were experiencing due to financial hardship and redirected them to more viable long-term solutions. This intervention might have redirected them to more constructive opportunities like participating in youth build program through the housing program, where they could earn a high school diploma and receive compensation. Last month, Police Chief Larry Boone visited the First Followers Drop-In Center to discuss some of our concerns. We presented a study conducted during a Champaign-Urbana Day celebration, which identified poverty, a lack of resources as leading causes of community violence. Chief Boone agreed with our findings and respected our efforts. We also discussed several initiatives, including hiring mental health professionals to accompany officers on certain calls, establishing actionable community partnerships, researching high crime areas to tailor policing strategies. I believe these are valuable suggestions that could be highly beneficial if implemented correctly within an alternative policing model. Following our discussion, I researched programs like Dayton, Ohio's Mediation Response Unit and Chief Boone's, um, experience with alternative response programs in Newark, New Jersey. Our lengthy conversation covered concerns over data collection and the implementation of charges. Chief Boone understands the importance of these issues and expressed willingness to incorporate alternative response methods to reduce crime. I believe starting with such an approach and periodically reviewing at just a couple of seconds...
Two, two sentences.
Okay. "Its effectiveness will be prudent and a prudent, uh, course of action." I'll end it there. James Tiger Corbin III.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Tammy Little, and I am a Transitional Housing Coordinator with First Followers. So my job is to find housing for individuals coming out of the correction facilities. That's the strike right there, that, that makes my job that much tougher to convince landlords, property managements to give a chance to these individuals because without housing, they're on the streets. You know, they can't get a job because they don't have no place to live, you know? I've been here a couple of times. I shared with you guys some of the statistics of individuals being released. Over 300,000 individuals are released in the state of Illinois every year. And we are feeling the trickle effects in Urbana and Champaign. So we are not, we are, actually, we're asking for more resources. Uh, we certainly respect the police and Chief Boone's position. But we would like just a little bit of that to help us with these individuals to establish a normalcy in their lives. We all go home, for those of us that have homes. We can turn on the lights, off the lights. We can take a shower. These individuals cannot do that because we don't have the resources. I spent the entire day today talking to at least 20 individuals that are looking for housing. So we definitely, uh, need to put some resources into these programs that will help them. One, uh, we talked about in previously, RPC, we partnered with RPC. One of, uh, my success stories, guy came out, was in a transitional home, and we provided him with a one-year voucher. Currently, he's working full-time. He just proposed to his fiancee, and he's off to a good start because he had a home to go to. So I thank you for your time and like you all to consider some of these resources for this badly needed issue. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Kilgore. I'm a resident of Urbana and also the Director of Advocacy and Outreach for First Followers. I actually want to repeat something very profound that was uttered earlier this evening. And that is the simple three-point platform that Dr. Stephanie Cockrell and her team put forward, very simple. One, limit the number of police. Two, no hub in Silver Water or in Southeast Urbana. And three, build relationships in the community. So in keeping with that, I want to say, let's give the sheriff and the community the tools that they need to build a peaceful, prosperous community. So what I'm suggesting is number one, that we look at the rest of the Barry Dunn Report, that we can't act and make decisions about how to allocate money when we've spent over $200,000 on a study that hasn't even been studied. Secondly, one of the young women that came on the recording spoke of a loved community that she comes from, a loved community. How often do we hear people say that they feel part of a loved community? I think we should be researching, what is it that creates a loved community in Southeast Urbana that we can, that we can recreate in other parts of the city? Because we all, we talk a lot about mental health, but if a loved community is not something that's addressing mental health, I'm not too sure what is. Thirdly, we need to research more deeply structural racism and structural poverty. Because these are the factors that underlie the crime in this, in this city and across the country. So we need a deeper understanding of that. We haven't really explored that in depth in conjunction with the study of the police. We haven't really explored that in depth in conjunction with the study of the police. And getting those things together, build a plan of action through more interaction, building better relationships with the community, and connecting with organizations like The Well Experience in the community to develop that strategy. Thank you.
My name is Brian Doliner. I have lived in Urbana-Champaign for 20 years now. I moved here in June of 2004. And in the 20 years that I've lived here, I've worked with numerous community organizations. Most recently, I work with Dixon Stars. They're in Champaign. They are a basketball team. They work with youth impacted by gun violence and send them on trips to go to attend basketball tournaments. And I helped to write them a grant that sent them to several basketball tournaments over the summer. So, you know, I just want to relate, you know, one, a personal experience anecdotal piece. I was back home visiting my family in Wichita, Kansas, and they have a new police chief. They conducted a study, and the study came back, and the chief came out with the call for more officers, more budget lines, more police for the city. My hometown, Wichita, Kansas, makes me think that there's a kind of playbook going around in which police call for more officers, claims of being understaffed. This is also being repeated in the prisons, where I do a lot of work, claiming they're But what is the reality here is there's a crisis of legitimacy for police in this country, a call for defunding the police, and this is part of a nationwide effort to try to refund the police because of this clear lack of accountability and this crisis of legitimacy. This is not something that's far off. This is something that happens here in Urbana. I'm also a journalist. I wrote about Officer John Frankwamont, who brutalized numerous local residents of Urbana as an Urbana police officer. I wrote the piece for the Invisible Institute. Frankwamont was fired in March of 2022. It's been over two years, and we still don't know. It's in arbitration. We don't know if he's been fired, let go. We don't know if he's going to get his job back, if he's going to sit and collect the pension. We still don't know what the status of John Frankwamont, former Urbana police officer, is. And it's this crisis of legitimacy that is causing this backlash among the police to try to refund their budgets. And so, you know, that's one piece, just that I wanted to share anecdotally. The other piece is, you know, I just again want to call for Urbana to, you know, work with the community groups that are already embedded in the community, like The Well Experience. And I hope that your vote tonight does not account for more money like this. This is not the kind of way that we want to commemorate Juneteenth in Urbana. Thank you.
My name is Skylar. I'm a lifelong resident of the CU area, and I'm here to speak about the proposed additional funding for the Urbana PD. I'm not here to try to appeal to a motion, nor am I here to air personal grievances. I have no problem with police officers as individual people. I'm sure we have a lot in common with each other, just as fellow human beings. I emphasize with the desire to want to protect Urbana and its citizens, and I'm sure, that I'm sure a lot of them have. All that said, I am very concerned about the prospect of adding additional police officers or social workers that work hand-in-hand with police. I've seen police, as an institution, hurt people, and I've seen friends arrested facing the full force of the state. The police should be treated like a loaded weapon. You should not aim them at anything you do not want harmed or even killed. They are not a fix-all solution to the problems our community faces. We should not be using them to do jobs that they are simply not suited for. Until the police are only handling the jobs that they are suited for, such as in-progress violent crimes, I am not convinced that the Police Department is using their resources effectively. What we do have is a strong local community capable of handling ourselves and keeping each other safe. And I hope that you all on City Council can see how powerful that is. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Erie. I've been living in the Champaign-Urbana area for about two years now as a student at the University of Illinois. And about three years ago, around the same time of year, in my hometown of Elgin, Illinois, about three hours away from here by car, I was standing in their City Council building having a almost deja vu-like experience that I'm having right now, because the city of Elgin wanted to get rid of requirements, four-year degree requirements for their police force, because they needed to expand their police force, because they were having staffing issues. And they wanted to allocate millions more dollars over the course of several years to fix this problem. And I was standing up here, talking to people that are disinterested, as I see many of you are now. And the strange thing is that we were arguing from a position of facts. It is not a matter of ideology whether or not we should have police in the streets. It is a scientifically proven fact that police do not get rid of crime. Poverty alleviation gets rid of crime. Resolving the economic antagonisms that lead to crime, resolving those antagonisms gets rid of crime. When I go back home, which I dread doing now, because I love the city of Urbana, I love the buses, I love the streets, I love the nature, I love the community programs, I love the people here that care about their city enough to want to help it get better. I hate going home, because when I go home now, I see slums in almost every single street of Elgin. I can't go to the library without somebody coming up to me and begging me out of desperation to help them. And they got their police. They got their money. And it didn't work. I don't know why this is still an issue. I am 200 miles away from my home, having this exact same conversation, and it blows me away. This isn't a matter of, oh, what should we do? Oh, what do we need to study? We don't need to sit around twiddling our thumbs, spending money, wasting time. We know what to do. Community programs have been proven scientifically to resolve poverty and eliminate crime. We don't need to sit around wondering what we need to do. We have dozens, hundreds of community leaders that are begging for this money to help their communities, because they love them. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Evelyn Nittle. I've lived in and around Champaign-Urbana for my entire life, and I'm just here to say that I'm opposed to any and all increases to the police budget. I'm opposed to any new staff being added to the Police Department, whether these are social workers or new officers. If the council is actually willing to invest in legitimate non-police emergency response options for the city of Urbana, these options need to be completely removed from the UPD. Otherwise, it's actually an alternative option. A social worker accompanied by or working alongside armed officers is still the police response. And increasing the police budget in order to accommodate social worker hires is still increasing the police budget, which we have called multiple times not to happen. Since the proposed budget increase was announced, your constituents have shown up at every general city council meeting to speak against increasing the police budget in any way, almost exclusively. If the police budget is increased and new positions are added, despite the nearly unanimous position of those at public comment, it will be clear that our speaking here was pointless. It makes it obvious that a decision was made before this was ever presented to the public, and that the public comment yet you begrudgingly sit through is a waste of my time and yours. As I continue to attend these meetings, it becomes more and more clear that the council is not here to lesson or listen to us or to represent us. Council members are instead waiting for us to speak and finish and leave, so that they can get on with acting in their own and in the UPD's interests, rather than in the interests of their constituents.
Good evening. My name is Kenita Faye. I'm an Urbana resident, and I don't have PhD. What I have to offer is 25 years of serving University of Illinois students. I have been helping students transition to universities successfully in a healthy way. I have deep appreciation for community groups, community resources, each and every one of them, everybody who works so hard. At the same time, I have been calling police to come and address and help my students. I will not change my position to say in front of the council that we need both. Say otherwise would be a lie to my 25 years firsthand experience to say, sir, stop, let go of your student, your friend. I'm going to call police right now. I have been doing that all my entire professional life. Outside work, I have been volunteering extensively in Urbana and the Champaign County. I actually come to tell you good news. I'm excited to tell you that, but I want to address this one thing real quick. I appreciate the presentation. It's really hard to hear, because I can relate to students. I did not think highly of police officer before. I worked with police officer, but I never felt comfortable. I'm always like, kind of a little bit scared. Not until a couple of years ago, when you approved School Resource Officer. When I started to observe, because I volunteered heavily at the high school, I saw what I never thought I would see in my life. I saw high school students in all colors say hi to police. They don't act like they're afraid of the police. I am a adult, like, kind of stand behind, and I don't feel comfortable. But those students have shown me that by pressing police officers who have the skill, who know what they're doing in the environment, that can help young adults to feel that they are equal, regardless of color of their skin. They are treated respectfully. And to me, thank you to you for voting for that. Thousands of our students walk out of the door, feeling that they are human, they are equal to police, they can high-five the police. And that is what I did not have in my life. And I thank you for doing that. And please give police the resource that they need. Thank you.
My name is Stephen McGuire. I want to start by talking about what we can agree on. We need social services. We don't do social services well. Our mental health system is pay-to-play. While I do not want to say that we should end the police, they have the funding they need. The KUUDS model involves police in less than 1% of calls. If we can make sure that appropriate people go to every call, we all agree that is best. So I would love to see you fund services for homeless, impoverished, food insecure, and mentally ill people, rather than pay any of this money to the police, but I don't think this will happen. However, at least match all the funding for the police to social services. This is because we do not do social services as well as we could and should. We fund the police perfectly. Let's add money to social services. I would like to allot any remaining time to Martell Williams. Thank you.
Martell Miller. How y'all doing today? Hey, Chris, I'm apologizing that the guy said what he said. Shouldn't never happen. I'm coming up here. Urbana needs a shelter, a woman's shelter, that relieved of what's going on in Champaign that they shelter. If you can find money for police officers, you can find money for people that really need it, a place to stay. If you can't find that money for them, you can't find that money for the police. You know, people, you can't arrest your way out of poverty. You can forget that. I'm going to tell you, when we had the most police officer come, and I'm coming from a black man's point of view, and I want y'all to listen to me. 1990, when they passed the Crime Drug Bill, we had an occupied force in our community. We had too many police officers riding around in our community, not only looking for drugs, but they throwing bricks fishing. You know, they may find drugs here, but you stop 10 cars to find one person with some drugs, and we lost our freedom of movement. You know? And that can start again. I've been coming here almost 20 years, right? 18 years to be exact. I dealt with Mike Beely, one of the best chiefs y'all ever had in Urbana. Of course, he thought about the community. He talked to the community. He came out and met the people in our community. He didn't come here demanding what he did. He tried to figure out what did the police need to work in our community. Then I deal with the guy that took his place. He went back to police, and I can't think of his name. But he went back to hard policing again. They were stopping cars. Darryl was here showing all the police stops, the outrageous police stops in Urbana. As a black man, you risk getting stopped four times in one year? Y'all got the numbers. You know, I've been coming here to this council, dealing with police issues. I never met a police chief like this when you're out here. He said he knew me already, met me the first day, because I asked him the right kind of questions. I asked him, as a police officer, what would be a black man's first crime? He went to a whole nother level of talking. A black man's first crime is this right here. He could be stopped. If I go right now, at 1:00 in the morning, walk out in Stone Creek, minding my business, just taking a walk, I guarantee the police would be caught, and they'd ask me what I'm doing. And I used to stay over here on Illinois Street, got stopped several times, asked me where I'm going, where I been. I was coming from the store, right here at Lincoln Square. They see me with the bags, that's common ground. And I'm telling you, we do not need more police officers. We need more resources for people. I seen a, I'm glad he left me time. They had a stop here about three months.
Martell, we don't yield time.
About three months ago, we had a stop. Guy had missing a license plate on the front. They had nine cars right here on Vine Street. I got it on video. And then said the man smelled like marijuana. I know this young man, all his life, never smoked marijuana. But I won't let you go. We don't need more police, we need more funding for people.
My name is Chris Selly, and I've lived in the Champaign County and Champaign-Urbana community my whole life. So we've heard a lot over the last few meetings and tonight about what communities need to heal, that broken families, traumatized families, that that's a cycle that moves through generations. We know what solves crimes. We know that trying to respond is not a preventative measure, and there's nothing in expanding the police budget that works to address any of the causes. We have alternatives to a wide variety of the staffing problems by handling the calls through more appropriate and possibly more affordable alternative methods. We're having a communication problem. We're having a conversation problem, at least with part of the council. And part of this is that this is not a decision that the council should be making. It's a decision that a community committee, excuse me, with real power to decide policy, so that we could have these stakeholders not here begging you to see them as human, begging you to see their ideas as valid, but that that power would actually exist with those stakeholders on that board. The mayor merged our two remaining boards, which then only met for like, two more sessions before they never met again. And so with the history of this community having boards that needs to be revived, the calls in the Barry Dunn Report for the council to do exactly that, the calls in the task force that the chief likes to bring forward, calls the Police Department to advocate for exactly this committee, I really think you guys need to move forward on how this conversation happens, where the power is in the conversation, and divesting some of that power from yourself. power is in the conversation, and divesting some of that power from yourself. And we really need to talk about how that we need policing is not a call for more policing. It's a call for the same amount of policing or a minimum amount of policing. So please don't conflate calls for supporting general policing as a concept for a budget expansion. And if they are, make sure it's a data-driven, not an emotional appeal. And that we don't have much data to support that. Also, as far as actually working on meaningful crime, you know, we live in a place where wage theft has passed retail theft, where civil asset seizure has surpassed burglaries. So if the police wanna work on crime, they have a whole lot to work on that they're not really doing anything about. So I just, from so many directions, please match any funding available to social services. Anything you're willing to commit to police, match to social services. And move away from another sub-police station a mile away from this one that's just gonna terrorize people who while they may not pay your taxes or vote for you today, you represent those children's voices more than you represent ours.
Hi, my name's Brian. So a couple of weeks ago, my car got stolen out of my driveway. And when they found it a few days later, well, actually when I got it out of Tatman's tow-in for like 250 bucks, you know, the only like signs of people being in there other than my ignition column being dismantled was just some Scooby snacks, like the fruit snacks, Scooby snack brand. And you know, just like some toys, like I could tell my tech decks and stuff were messed with. You know, obviously children that took my car, those kids do not need to be arrested. They need something better to do. They need, you know, and if they were to get caught doing stuff, kids are always gonna do bad things. No matter how many police officers are out there, that can just make it more fun. I don't know if you remember being a kid, kids don't really think straight. So you can threaten them with as many cops as you want, that's just gonna get them in more trouble, that's just gonna allow them to have an avenue to ruin their lives when we could be creating avenues for these kids to make their lives better. So that's where I think the funds should be going, and that's all I gotta say.
I'm Paul Muth down the block on Illinois Street here in Urbana. This is my third time speaking here and I'm encouraging you to go back. And I wanted to point out that community engagement officer is not a community response person. But I wanted to start with the fact that in Urbana, the budget has gone up 77% in the last six years for policing. Now, it's generally the talking point of increased crime of the right wing. That's where the drumbeat of, you know, we have to spend more money on public safety. Crime rates have gone down, violent crime rates have particularly gone down after the pandemic. But I disagree with the fellow that said that we should make the decision, that you are the elected body, but you should take input. And I'm glad he did bring up the defunct Urbana Community Alternative Policing Program because I've been trying to get a timeline on how those units of community input disappeared after three months. There's an article on CU Citizen Access, which I guess is organized through the J-School and through WLL Media. Results of defunct Urbana Community Alternative Policing Program: A Mystery. Racial Disparity Reports No Longer Accessible. There was a long time ago, Todd Satterthwaite actually had a task force that met for quite a few years. I think Melinda Carr, Reverend Carr, spoke about attending some of those meetings. But those notes are actually rather pathetic. When they get to the interrogatories with the officials, it just says, "They were questioned." It doesn't give you any of the topics. So I did a little cursory look at through of what we could have learned from that. We apparently didn't learn anything. The Barry Dunn Report, obviously, you paid for it, you should look at it before you do anything. That's been said before, but I wanted to throw it in with that is that Reverend Evelyn Underwood and Melinda Carr and the head of the NAACP all called for a public meeting. And I think that's important, and it should be done when the Barry Dunn Report is here. Now, I heard something about some of the money for the Barry Dunn Report being reallocated to looking at alternative responses. I think it ought to go to alternative responses immediately because it can be done. I attended three of the public safety meetings at the IMC, well organized. There was a gentleman from LEAP, which used to be Law Enforcement Against Prohibition, but is now the Law Enforcement Action Program, project, I guess. And Chief Tom Thomas of the Sinclair Community College Police Department, Public Safety Department, urged that the community response be not in the police department as it is in Dayton, Ohio, where he is.
Hello, City Council. I wish we had more time, but I understand that everybody has to go home at some point. So, but I would wish I could speak about the Family Justice Center that Urbana.
Karen, could you speak into the microphone?
Can we start over my time, please?
Sure.
Go ahead. Hi, my name is Sarah Nixon. I wish we had more time to speak, but I understand that everybody has to get home. But I would dearly like to address the question of the Family Justice Center that Urbana deserves and needs, as does Champagne. So my name is Sarah Nixon. I'm a, been a longtime resident of Urbana where I work and pay taxes. And I'm here primarily because I have voices from the South Philo Road community to share with you. If I don't get a chance to share them right now, I will email them if I can't share them all. But these words that I want to share with you come from regular people who live in the neighborhood, gentle people, gentle souls who for one reason or another do not or cannot come forward and attend council meetings to give their input. Their words do not represent my views, they don't represent the views of any organization or institution, they're just citizens in the neighborhood. Because it usually seems that the privileged and/or the powerful, which is yes essentially everyone, not everyone, but almost everyone in this room, it's them, we, who speak for the marginalized and the voiceless. And it often seems like the city government does not effectively go out into the community to genuinely engage with the folks who have so much at stake, but as I said, who for one reason or another cannot or do not come to this building to participate and give their input. So just to preface, like just about everybody here, I am truly in favor of less rather than more policing, demilitarization of police, no license plate readers due to the high risk for abuse. But I'm also, like presumably everyone else, in favor of less crime, ideally no crime. And Chief Boone's proposals for community policing make a lot of sense to the community that he is directly looking at. Again, not advocating for exorbitant or precipitous expenditure, and I too would like to see this council, this government, match spending for community services. But quickly, I provide community service every day, sorry, I provide customer service every day to a very large number of people at one of my many jobs. This one in particular is for people in the South Philo Road community. I work at Salt and Light, I choose to work there. It's an incredibly rewarding job, primarily, in fact, completely because of the residents, the neighborhood people that I get to serve and interact with. I have dozens of conversations every day with these people, hundreds and hundreds every week, and I love all of them and value them. And so last week, out of genuine curiosity, I asked residents of this neighborhood a simple question during our conversations. I said, "Our new chief of police wants to set up a small satellite station in this neighborhood. If that happens, would you feel overpoliced or would you feel safer?" And I did not pick and choose to whom I asked the question, I did not discriminate. I actively examined my own biases and I didn't ask people whom I thought might answer one way or another. So I'll have to email the verbatim comments, which I tried to write down most of them, but overwhelmingly, the people were simply in favor and described day-to-day life in very difficult circumstances with regard to crime. And I'll email you their words. Thank you.
Hi there, Urbana City Council. First, I just want to say thanks. I know you've been listening to me a lot the last few months and I know that, well, in listening to the budget discussion, I was proud to be a resident of this city. Y'all had a conversation where you worked really hard to listen to your people and to create a budget that's balanced and looks forward in a good way. And you had an honest conversation, listening to your constituents about what level of policing really was desired. And so I, and not, and within that, you also discussed creating a line item or, you know, ways to get a budget line item for alternative response, which is something that this community has been asking for for decades. And the idea that a thing could be added to the budget, which is trackable, which is accountable to the city council and has a space for community response, I think is absolutely lovely. To have a way to track the amount of investment our city has in that, for that mechanism to be then renewable year over year if we build something good, I think that's a really positive thing. It's something we've been at, working for for years. I've been here, you know, I'm pretty young, but I've been at this for over 10 years myself. Dr. Reverend Evelyn Underwood was here asking for better sewer systems with the plumbing already then. We're working against tasers. All the folks on council have changed. The only face still in front is Mayor Marlin, who was on council then and is now the mayor. She was already running on a police expansionist budget. This is Chief Boone's first year. It's Chief Boone's first year. During y'all's time on the council, police budget has ridden dramatically, and we're asking you simply not to reduce, expand the police department. It's a reasonable request. If you don't expand the police, they will not simply cease to exist. So I'm grateful for everyone who's been well-served by the police, but not expanding them isn't going to have them not be there. When we ask for a community response, we really hope that you are going to prioritize the people who already have vast expertise and are sitting in front of you. I know that Larry Boone talks about his experience, but there's folks who've been working in this community for decades. We are not asking for strangers with guns. It is very expensive to hire somebody from the outside community, give them a gun and train it with it first, and then take them to our community and say, "Now, we want you to value these people and not use the gun at the wrong time." It's much more expensive or much more valuable to pay the folks who are already here, who already have inherent value in the community that they are already a part of. Don't hire with strangers with guns, that is not what we are asking for. There's such vast expertise and wisdom already here, invest in that. We already have, yeah, we have so many people who are doing the good work already. Yeah, but to say that we need to give Chief Boone the resources he needs and to have been denying those resources to the people in this community for decades is an insult to the wisdom and the people who are sitting in front of you today. Please fund us, don't fund strangers with weapons. Have a love with us.
Hi, my name's Sana Sabualla. I've been a CU resident for six years. I currently live in Ward Fire over Urbana. I'm a member of CU Muslim Action Committee. I appreciate that based on our engagement and discussion, you've reduced the number of police budgeted for and set aside money to look into alternatives. However, the expense of the remaining police that you're still considering is exorbitant, especially because of the considerable needs of the community. You could match the funds, which would be good, or you could use all of those earmarked funds for community of alternatives, which would be great. I feel really lucky right now to live in a place where the community is engaged enough to use their civil rights to participate in this type of decision-making. So many of us are here asking for the same thing. 640 people signed the IMC petition asking you for you to wait until we understand other options before taking this expensive step. I hope you continue to show us that a community engagement does mean something to this council. I appreciate the steps that have been taken, but what we are asking for is very reasonable. We're asking you to wait, to do a bit more research, to talk to the community more about how the council can best spend its funds. As has been mentioned by the community and by the council, police is a prescriptive solution to the problem, not a community-based one. To reiterate what Ben said, we have amazing community organizing here in Urbana, people who work really hard and know the needs of the community because they are the community. This is something I talk about in my own academic work, what it takes to make any project community-based is accountability. In my own research, my family members have donated their blood as part of my project. And these are people who I cannot walk out of their lives, right? If there's a data breach, I'm accountable, there's no way I'm not getting in trouble for that, right? And when we want community-based efforts, we want people who can't just walk out of the community when things go wrong. Community efforts are run by people who stay accountable to that community, to our community, because they're part of our community. So when we hire more police to solve community safety issues, we require them, supposedly we should be requiring them, to take the time, training, effort, and money to become part of the community. Why should we do that when we have people who already live here and are socially engaged here, who can take on these roles while staying accountable to the community if provided with the proper resources? Again, what we're asking for is very moderate. We're here asking to, we aren't here today asking to reduce the police force, we could be, right? There've been countless examples of why we could and maybe should be asking for that, but that's not what we're asking for. We're asking you not to engage in an expansionist project and instead explore the strong engagement, creativity, and ingenuity that is available to you that already exists here, like the well-experienced, like first followers. People are doing this work. You on the council are also my neighbors, right? We live in the same place. You're a part of my community too, and I hope your votes today demonstrate your trust in us as a community.
Hi, my name is Alexandria Stone and I've been ACU resident for about three years. Last week, Chief Boone said, quote, "Crime is crime and it is generally driven by poverty." I want to look at that first part of the statement. Crime is crime as if all crime is equally bad. Is a violent crime of murder or sexual assault as bad as someone stealing a few groceries to feed their children? Of course not. Crime is not generalized. Not all crimes share the same motive. And for the second part, it is generally driven by poverty. This part of the statement I will agree with. Most people commit small crimes out of desperation. For more serious offenses, many of these would not happen if people had access to mental health care. And that is nearly impossible to receive in this country. I applied for Medicaid in September of 2023, and my application has still neither been approved or denied. But even if I were approved for Medicaid, I would still likely not be able to receive mental health treatment as there are virtually no therapists who accept Medicaid as insurance. Thankfully, I have a small but very important support system. I have lived through a lot of trauma, and without that support, I don't know what I would do. Yet there are people in our communities who are deeply hurting. They very well may not have a support system to carry them through their trauma and their grief. When people bottle up their pain, eventually it comes out in some way, and it's not always going to be pretty. Sometimes it will result in a crime. So rather than giving the police over $2 million in additional funds, let's see how that money can go toward eliminating poverty in Urbana. And consequently, crime levels will fall. The origins of police in America go all the way back to when people would capture or kill slaves who ran away. This institution carries with it so much generational trauma. The institution of police is not the answer to crime within our community. It is rooted in oppression and it continues today. Give those resources back to the community rather than to an organization that was created to oppress and rather, that was created to oppress community and protect the property of the wealthy. Thank you.
My name is Faith Ryan. I've been here. I'm just gonna say, we live in a police state, and the police state is super physical. It is so hard to divorce myself from it, and the violence that it necessitates is an omnipotent system. It's the surveillance camera at every door, it's weeks of FOIA requests, unmarked cop cars in Town and Country just down the road, and undercover cops and gators on our college campus. The police state creates that in your brain. It recreates a fascist system through which your thoughts, feelings, and experiences are policed. are policed. The checkpoints through which they pass are cruel, and the interrogation spirals. It demands omniscience from us. The police state steals from your body and forces you to become a dissociated surveillance state of your own, a surveillance state for your body's survival in a violent world. My body was stolen from me, and I want it back. Why do we need more guns and more gators? Why do we need more of our money taken from us to expand the police state? It's already taken so much from us. Why must you make it harder to survive? Why can't our money be used to learn, to heal, to feed, to house, and to clothe each other? Why can't you invest in our ability to live rather than our ability to survive? I don't want to be bitter, and I don't want to be angry, but I am, and I have to respect that. Whether you do or not is not something I can fix. I appreciate my colleagues and my comrades who have worked and negotiated with council members Grace, Jaya, and Chris. I appreciate you guys for listening. I appreciate our community for resisting the police state in whatever means we can. We do not need more cops than we already have. We must invest as much as possible within our community's existing resource systems. We must invest as much as possible in each other. Thanks.
My name is, my name is Gwyneth Crepsio. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm a resident of Ward Five. I had a chance to watch the recording from last week's meeting, and it was very, it was very insightful, and it was really amazing to see Jaya and Chris and Grace going up to bat for us, and I really appreciate that. I do want to ask, and maybe there's a genuine reason that I'm just not aware of, but it was disappointing to see that my ward, Ward Five, wasn't represented by Chandra and wasn't able to be making votes on these tiebreak, not able to be a tiebreak for these votes that were so close. And I'm also disappointed and find it to be pretty ridiculous that these budget increases were kept due to tied votes when they shouldn't have been included without community input in the first place. I also find it pretty biased and ridiculous that Chief Larry Boone was allowed so much direct input when there was no one to represent other community services. And I'm not sure why, he seems like a very respectful, reasonable man. We have people that are able to represent those community services. Danielle Chenoweth comes to mind. I'm sure there's other people that would be able to speak to those things that weren't able to have a voice in the room. And, you know, we've, yeah. It sounds like everyone has an agreement that we need community services, and that we need to explore these alternative safety models. But I think it's very important to emphasize that we're asking these to be separate from the Urbana Police Department, and that we're asking for services that aren't within the police department, like whatever this pilot program for community engagement officers is. However, we were speaking about that last week. It seemed like a lot of council members didn't even know what that meant. And if y'all don't know what it means, we certainly don't know what it means, and we shouldn't be funding it. So if no one knows what it means, and, if no one knows what it means, and it has all the appearances of other nonprofits and services in the area, why aren't we just funding those? And why aren't we doing the work that people, like putting money into the work that people are already doing? I also want to emphasize that we need to ensure that any research and funding for alternative models is happening outside of the police department, because that's clearly a conflict of interest. Regardless of how the city council spends our money, we will keep taking care of each other like we always have been, on little, little to next to nothing, and we will keep us safe.
My name is Elizabeth Soderopulos. I've lived in Urbana-Champaign for 35 years, ever since I was a ward of the state of Illinois and adopted when I was just over one. I was born into homelessness. My biological family didn't receive the social services they needed. My biological family had to be dissolved, and I had to be adopted before I could receive the help that my whole family should have received, because we all live in a system that criminalizes poverty. And that's really why I'm here. I don't want children, I don't want more children to lose their parents, their siblings, their families, and their histories to state violence. And police are part of that systemic state violence. When our elected officials continue to find funding for police to do work that they're not even trained to do, while starving community services of desperately needed funding, we are committing violence against children and families. But funding those social services will actually reduce crime and create healthier, happier communities, where children and families can stay together, and everyone can get the support they deserve simply for existing. I'm here to speak up for the children of Urbana who are currently growing up without their needs being met. I want to amplify the voices of the children from the Well Experience, who have shared tonight what it's like to live in an overpoliced community. I'm here to speak up for kids who are at risk of the consequences of overpolicing, like losing their parents and guardians to police brutality, prison, family dissolution, which means when children are permanently taken from their biological family, and more. I drive to and from Urbana five days a week, specifically to the area where this proposed Philo Road substation will go. I noticed something unsurprising, a high concentration of liquor and smoke shops. These shops overwhelmingly target poor communities and communities of color. I invite you all to read the numerous peer-reviewed studies that show the systemic racism behind this high concentration of liquor stores, and how alcohol is connected to higher rates of violence. If you really want to do something about crime in this community, you could start there. Instead of a police substation, how about a mental health and substance abuse support You found funding for more police, why not find funding for the Well Experience, or Cunningham Township, or any of the other services for our community? Why not invest in businesses developed and run by residents who actually live near South Philo Road? If increased policing would have, could solve any problems, it would have worked by now, and it's not. Invest more in people, not in more police. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Maya Novick. I'm an Urbana resident and a student at the University of Illinois, double majoring in social work and psychology. As a future social worker, I hear a lot of things about my future profession. They tell me, you're going to get burnt out, you're going to be underpaid, you're not going to enjoy your career. And most of my weed-out classes tell me about all of the problems wrong in the community, and what I will not be able to do, and how I won't be able to make a change. So if you're wondering what a weed-out class in social services looks like, that's it. Thank you for laughing. Knowing that we're putting more money towards policing while I'm going into a career that is so terribly underfunded is unbelievably frustrating. I know what my, like, possible income will be going into my future. I know what people tell me when I say I'm going to be a social worker. They're like, oh, you're so nice for doing that. I could never. What if I could? What if more people felt like they could because they had the resources, that they could become social workers, and they didn't feel like they were going into a system that was already too broken for them to fix? This is why I am in support of take, of not going and increasing this budget and opening this new station, because that money has so many places where it could be going, where it could be used more efficiently. With social workers, with teachers, with people who actually know the community and know what the community needs, this is what we want. I was out on the bus going to my work yesterday, and across from me, there is a gentleman who was having clearly a medical crisis, and I had this moment where I was like, do I, what do I do? Like, do I call the police? He's clearly bleeding, but it was a person of color. Like, if I'm calling 911, am I condemning this man to death by not, or is he going to cause more harm because I didn't call anyone? And it was just like this dilemma, and he ended up, like, getting off the bus before I had a chance to go and talk to him. But it's this question of, I'm going to help people. Like, why am I wondering if calling for help is condemning the person I want to help to death? So thank you so much for your time, and I really hope you will consider both what I've said and what my colleagues have said.
I'm Maxwell Haynes, and I'm a resident of Urbana. I don't want the police budget increased ever in any way, shape, or form. I believe that most of the people contacting you and speaking here today agree with me, and I think we all know that there are other ways we can serve our community and actually provide them safety, like you say. I have degrees in the fields of psychology, political science, and soon, social work as well. And obviously, that has made me an activist. That's why I'm here today. As a psychologist and a social worker, I want us all to recognize that people are feeling a lot of pain and trauma related to this issue. That means many of us are speaking from places of anger, pain, and sadness, and otherwise displaying emotions that are not following the decorum that many of you want, and many of you try to encourage out of us, and that causes a lot of you to shut down and ignore us. And I want you to take in mind that these are completely natural emotions and thoughts, and they should no way discount any arguments that are made, because it is the belief that expressing emotions and passion somehow make your argument less logical is rooted in white supremacy, and has been used to marginalize communities for centuries. I hope that you can keep this in mind and check your biases. As a political scientist and activist, it is the job of you, as our representatives, to listen to us, provide for us, act in our wishes, and improve our lives to the best of your ability. It is a fact that police are not the most efficient way to serve your community, and they do not keep people safe. Inherently, police are reactive. They simply cannot prevent crime. According to the Pew Research Center, only 2% of crimes end in conviction, and virtually no crimes are stopped in the act. Because police are necessarily reactive, we have to look at alternatives. Because every person who dies from poverty, racism, lack of access to health care, lack of access to shelter, and lack of access to basic nutrients is a moral failure of our Engaging in preventive care within our community can literally save lives, and you can greenlight a host of prospects to do so. Poverty alone is the fourth-largest cause of death in the United States, and it contributes to the top three. I could recommend a host of options that will directly benefit your community and immediately meet the needs of the most desperate and marginalized. Plant perennial food-bearing crops in public areas to remove hunger. Hire a separate department of licensed social workers as a crisis response team. Simply fund a food bank, or simply buy an apartment complex to house the unhoused. This will save more lives, in my opinion, is what community safety really means. Not just patrolling the streets and arresting a disproportionate number of black members of our community. I don't know what else to say at this point. I, like many other members of this city, am incredibly frustrated, and I just want you to do what is right. Please listen to us.
My name is Matt. I live in Ward Five. I've been watching the city council meetings for the last few weeks and just been so impressed with a lot of the different folks that have been speaking to you all, just with such amazing, compelling statements in opposition to expanded police force. And last week, I was really noticing how you all were talking about the budget in this way, where it's like, it's just thinking about it for the next year, but there's been a constant budget creep of increased police budget over the last number of years when other things have been shrinking. It, we're considered radical if we're asking for less police, and here we are, just asking for the same number, and that has not been considered, that now feels like we're asking for something radical, when really, there are so many other ways we could spend our money as a community to, like, really support the people that live here. I would please ask you to vote against expansion of the police budget. Thank you.
My name is Darlene Bailey, and I live in Ward Three, and I'm here this evening to support the chief. We have a lot going on in this town, at one time. It's not just the police, but we're also doing two fire stations also. And my problem is not with them, it's how we're going to pay for it. This is what I want to know, how we're going to pay for it. Everything that's pretty much listed that we can use, I can step back from, except the property taxes. I am totally against increasing property taxes. I don't have to smoke, I don't have to drink, I don't need no self-storage, I own my own home, and please believe me, I understand. I understand racism. I integrated a school in rural Arkansas at a very young age. I understand racism. And I also understand homelessness. I have been homeless. And when I took a good look at all of this, it depended on me. I had to do something for myself. I had to work with this myself. I had to pull myself up. I had to work and get myself back on track. So it's going to take the person as well, not just the police. But I'm willing to work with Chief Boone and his staff in our area to see if, I understand what these people are saying too, even though I'm not involved in it. But I am willing to work with Chief Boone and his staff to see if we can heal some of this, if we can turn this around. Let's see what we can do with it, because it's getting worse and worse. And please believe me, if you don't think you don't need the police, shut the cellphones off, and within three days, you'll have chaos all over this place. You will need the police. And my problem is, how are we going to fund it? That's what I'm looking at. I would love, it doesn't bother me about having more police. And I just want to know how we're going to fund it, because I cannot afford any more of this, okay? And with, if there is a way, and I think I have some ideas too. So working with the people in the community, you may be able to come up with some more ideas, but just putting all this on the police, I don't think we should do this. And again, I am supporting Chief Boone, and I look forward to working with him and his staff.
I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, and first of all, I just want to thank our community for coming out and talking with our elected officials, because that's what it's all about, holding them accountable. We need to hold them-
Ms. Underwood, can you address the council, please?
Well, I'm addressing the council. I'm doing the best I can.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. But let me hurry up. I just wanted to thank everyone for, for coming out, doing their civic duty. Hallelujah! I don't want to get personal here, but I just wanted to speak to, quickly, because I, we need to hear from our young people. I'm on my way out. I don't know where, but I hope the right place, the non-smoking section. But anyway, I was treasurer. I just want to bring this, of the Mothers Association at the academy over there, the University of Illinois. And I recall doing research when we were talking about SROs and all of that, and I just want to mention that. And, and we said, because I had children there too, as well as our Chicago friends and the county, what do you call the county, the rich folks up near Chicago? And, but they said, no, they got their own police force and everything at the university, and it is now in, in, in operation. Unless it's really bad, you know, they take care of it on there, because they say, you will not arrest my engineers and, and give them records and our teachers and all that. And so when it came to our middle schoolers here in the community, when we were fighting for, people were fighting to get SROs, I said, no, get a department. Get, you've got a, uh-huh? Security department. Thank you for helping me out. I'm on medication, y'all. Security department. Because the police, do what the police are supposed to do. I have policemen in my family. I'm not against policemen. However, we can see, we've come here and talked about, I've listened when I couldn't be here, and I'm sure- be here, and I'm sure a lot more people have listened, to see what we're going to do with that funding. We, I ran for mayor, as I say, and she beat me out looking beautiful. But the thing is, I did the research, the staff helped me. I was over here all the time for y'all to help me with this budget, and I know a little bit about it. And we need to keep what we got and not spending all this money, because you say one year.
I just wanted to speak, I spoke the last, on the 17th. Taking that off, I'm not trying to hide my ass, so I've spoken before. Eldress, our pastor, Melinda Carr. I just want to say, I know you have a hard decision tonight, to all the council, and the people who spoke tonight, our community coming together, and no matter what this vote is, that we hold ourselves accountable as community, and we hold our police department accountable, that we have a structure in place so that if community members have to challenge the police department, there's a process in place that people don't have to fear challenging the police, because that is, we heard it in the video, just children talking. So we have to have a process in place. And I just want to see us provide more services, funding for the services that are already in existence, so that the people who are here and keep coming are willing to help in working alongside the police that we have already in place, because people are fearful, people have expressed trauma, we have to deal with that trauma, and working together. So whatever the vote is tonight, listen to the people, listen to the people, for the people, by the people, listen to the people and what they're saying. And we're not against Chief Boone. Nobody was against Chief Boone. It's that everyone, like I said, on this earth has to be accountable. And we have to look at the history. A resolution was established by my own dear councilwoman because of the history, and we have to look at all this. The survey, the Barry Dunn report, hasn't been done. Why the rush? Let's work together. Speeding it up is not going to stop things from happening. We should work together. So that's what I want to say. Let's work together. Why spend all that money? And we don't deal with the things that we need to deal with right now, and work together, holding hands with Chief Boone and the police, and then holding them accountable, we hold ourselves accountable.
Hello, my name is Kate. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I'm here to also say that I do not support the millions of dollars added to the police budget. I wanted to ask you guys a question. I know that all of you care for the community. I assume that's why you ran in the first place. And I wanted to ask you tonight if you really, truly care about the whole community. Do you believe that everyone in your community deserves to eat? Do you believe that everyone in your community deserves to have housing? If your answer is not yes, I would question why you're even in this position. I don't think you deserve it. If your answer is yes, then I ask that you put your money where your mouth is, and you put the money toward resources that would give everyone in your community the opportunity to have access to good food, healthy food, as well as to housing that is quality housing, not just rundown. I'm not, so many of my community members today have spoken so well about this issue, and I just wanted to add my voice and say that I ask that you put your money where your mouth is, and truly invest in something that is guaranteed to help your community instead of investing in police, which at this point is proven to not be helpful, but also, at most, it's just a guess at trying to solve crime. So, thank you.
My name is Marina Manetti. I live in Urbana since 1977. Came to the University of Illinois. And I'm watching the trends globally, and I'm watching the trends locally. And everything is heading towards more armaments, more militarization, concentration of capital to very few hands, and people are hurting all over the globe, in our town. We have the most incarcerated population on the planet. We have the most armed population on the planet. We don't need more guns. We don't need more violence. The people who are in our overcrowded prisons are there for economic reasons. And the state has a monopoly on violence. And you all are asking for more militarization in a small town that has a low crime rate, relatively speaking, and a very high poverty rate, relatively speaking. Are you wanting to fuel the flames of this disaster? Is that what you want? We need shelter. We need good food. We need community. We need working together. We need good education. We need health. And we're getting guns thrown at us. This is insane. And it's on our taxes. We have to pay for it. We already pay extraordinarily high taxes. We want some results from all we're bleeding out. It's shameful if this gets passed. That's the bottom line.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches. Hi, my name is Natalie Martinez, and I have been a resident of Champaign County for two years now as a student of the University of Illinois. I have been taught my whole life to sit aside and be quiet as a means for safety. For my comunidades and familia in Latin America, if you spoke out, you got disappeared. And studies show that these disappearances have been systematically oriented primarily by police and government institutions. My first direct interaction with Urbana Police Force was on April 26, a day in which myself, fellow students, and community members, which included families and children, were surrounded by what was a very clear militarized force of police presence, a force surrounding a predominantly Black and Brown community. This is an existing military force that does not need more funding, does not need more bodies, does not need to be escalated. It is not a coincidence that at a time when students and community members, which include families and children, are elevating their voices, such as denouncing the U of I as a funder for genocide, that there be a call to increase more funding to already existing militarized presence in Urbana-Champaign. Community members and myself are still grappling with the physical and mental toll of the violence that ensued on that day, that was otherwise peaceful until escalated by police presence. This force has caused more tangible harm to myself and community members than good, and that has been made very clear tonight by numerous community members here tonight. Do not invest in violence. Do not invest in fear. Invest and center in community. Invest and center in community resources and joys. Clearly, that community is here and ready to guide and lead and teach us the way. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Larson, and I'm the Director of the Independent Media Center. I went to a national conference in Chicago over the weekend that gathered people working at the intersection of racial justice and technology. And in a small group discussion about public health and accessibility, we got to talking about all the amazing, helpful technologies, everything from medication reminders, which I know, I really appreciate getting texts on my phone about that, to video calls for patients that need translation at the doctor's office, not to mention the incredible treatment advances we have seen in the 21st century. But it is maddening at the same time to realize that we have incredible tools for healthcare, but we have yet to organize these tools so that everyone can access them. I believe most people in this room would agree that everyone should have the right to quality healthcare, but what hinders us is not the knowledge or technology to offer quality healthcare, but the organization of our resources in order to do this effectively. So as we debate our resources here in Urbana, I think the question of how we organize ourselves is really critical. I'm so grateful that you've set aside $105,000, or are proposing to, and began that conversation last week, and I'm hopeful that youth will make a video about what to do with those funds. We know that a amount could barely cover one new position, and I think we know it's not enough, but we can start to imagine, what would it be like to have on our City of Urbana staff positions that other cities have added? A behavioral health specialist, an emergency medical technician, a graduate-level intern, a licensed social worker, which we are considering, a marriage and family therapist, a nurse, a City of Urbana psychologist, City of Urbana mediators. Different people also bring different tools to bear that are tools of their trade. I'm concerned about some of the tools that police bring after coming from this conference over the weekend. You know, when you're framing technology that is trying to find criminals, you have a different approach to developing technology. And while I'm not implying that this department is developing such tools, we know that companies interested in government dollars are developing tools that respond to people's fears. Some of these tools are being developed in Palestine by Israeli forces. Facial recognition is one of those. In contrast, tools available and in development for healthcare professionals have a different purpose. These might be the incredible tools and knowledge we have, we have been developing to understand neuroscience and how to better support people with anxiety, depression, or other neurological conditions, or the curriculums that educational psychologists are developing to advance culturally responsive development for young people. These are all tools, these are all technologies. Another not-high-tech tool, but one that I would argue is technology nevertheless, is one of the community meeting. And so I end by asking you to please wait until we have multiple community meetings to give input on an alternative response, to give input to the Barry Dunn reports, the Phase Three and Four that we have left to read about, and invest in these tools to vote for a paradigm shift tonight. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay. We do have some emails that have been sent and we're asked to read into the record. I have, I have the ones that have arrived by 6:07 tonight. You may have received some after that. City Councilman Mayor Marlin, my name is Derek Brials. I live in Ward Four. Thank you for listening to the voice of the people, not pushing through a budget that did not address the needs of the people. This is a huge first step. There are, however, still a few issues to address. First, there's simply no documented need for community outreach officers. Chief Boone has provided no public information clearly outlining the duties of these proposed positions, nor have any specific goals or benchmarks been communicated. In my job, I simply cannot demand new positions be created without providing clear data on the need for these positions, what specific functions those positions will perform, how those functions would return value, and how to measure the success of implementing those positions. Until this information is provided, I find this to be an absurd and irresponsible proposition. Second, why do we in a city as small as Urbana need to rent a second police facility on Philo Road? All my statements above apply to this proposal as well. We should not expand the footprint or presence of police in Urbana until the Barry Dunn review is complete and we have a concrete plan in place for alternative response. Finally, please do not suddenly become concerned about fiscal responsibility when it comes to alternative response. You all seem fairly well-prepared to hand over an extra $2.7 million to the police. Any savings that remain from not capitulating to Boone's demands should be set aside in a fund for alternative response development. Additionally, the use of these funds must require a majority vote of city council to be used. That's the only way to ensure that city administration acts in accordance with the needs of the people. Be brave, be bold, demand that Chief Boone and the UPD provide real data to support their requests and success metrics for any proposed new positions. So please follow through on not adding the three new patrol officers and do not add the community outreach officers. Let's slow this process down and do what's right. This is a message from Julie Watkins. Please read during public input. These words are in response to public and council comment. Patrol officers, before the number of UTPD patrol positions are increased, I think the data referred to last week that UPT time per call is longer than average should be looked at and addressed. There were observations that questioned the number of backups that show up, which would increase the amount of police time per call. For example, noise calls are when no visible weapon, and the man was only wearing sport shorts in other observed instances. Calls for service, I also don't think number of calls by itself is sufficient to prove understaffed. If police are sent out for a call they can't help with. Some people call the police on other people they don't like or for other agendas. There were examples given of people needing or wanting help, such as for drug addiction or were homeless or other social need. If the call isn't something that is inherently about a police matter, we don't have to have more UPD positions so UPD can be the gatekeepers. Alternatives to policing, in discussion, Mary Alice Wu predicted that implementing such a system was probably a two-year process. The council started this three years ago. However, the Barry Dunn process did it backwards, as much public input was described. Even if staff said they did process logically, it wasn't what many public and some council members were understood what happened. Taking that example and Grace Wilkins' reply on how public engagement was insufficient about the community engagement trial program, and comments about how much community expertise already exists, I believe there should be meaningful opportunities of community to describe what help already exists, to describe what help would be most useful before the new positions are filled, to know what skills are needed. It's a three-year trial. Take time to ask what people need. Otherwise, UPD risks looking like a gatekeeper that is deciding itself what is best, rather than working with the community and respecting the existing expertise that is already there. Protecting the funds for police alternatives, I hope there's a way to prevent a repeat of how council votes were disrespected and harm done when a program was established using funds that by council vote could not be established without council agreement, because the relevant phrases were put in the so-called nine-binding part of the ordinance on staff advice, or because staff got direction and wrote the final draft that way. I forget which. That was ugly to watch when it happened. It's still causing harm through a lack of trust. Even if the people involved thought it was the easiest or fastest way to get a program started the UPD wanted, the harm caused by not respecting a clear vote has tainted the good done. There's no way to prove it would have been worse to respect the council's vote and to take the time to negotiate a compromise that would have addressed the council's concerns, which could have resulted in a better program. Thank you for your consideration. This message is from Carol Leff. On behalf of the ACLU, Champaign County, and the Illinois ACLU, we would urge you to await the full Barry Dunn report that includes alternative approaches to police response before making budgetary commitment to additional policing rather than social services. Police, of course, are essential for response to violent crimes, but in fact, most responses might better deal with mental illness or other inadequate social support systems. Social services are underfunded here and nationally. So before budgeting for the earlier Barry Dunn findings, please consider waiting for the data in the full Barry Dunn report. Thank you for dealing with this complicated issue. Carol Leff, co-president, Champaign County ACLU. This message is from Don Owen. I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting of the city council. I ask you I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting of the City Council, I ask you read this letter into public record. I want to begin by thanking members of the Council for listening to community input. Listening is as important part of government and decision-making. As I stated in my June 10 message to City Council, budgets are moral documents and your decisions have lasting implications. I applaud you for reducing the number of police staff positions in the budget under discussion, and I ask again, why are you adding any police positions when the data you have reviewed indicates there's a decrease in crime and less than half the calls to Emetcad from Urbana are for criminal offenses? Alternative response models gain more support from community members when they are not directly tied to police departments. I strongly urge you to revise your current budget resolution to further reduce the number of police positions and place those funds, in addition to the funds you set aside last week, into a separate line that is not under the purview of the police department. The Council can decide how best to spend those funds after a comprehensive study of alternative response models has been completed. Thank you for your service. Can I, I'm sorry, can I, I can't hear you at all. Sure, I'll try. Sorry. My name is Hanan, and I'm going to spell the last name J-E-B-E-R, and I'm a UC community member. I urge the City Council to not fund any more police positions, it sounds like my microphone just got turned off. Keep all alternative response funding outside of the police department and vote no to funding a community engagement police station on South Philo Road. My name is Hadjar, I believe that's how you might pronounce that. I'm a UC community member. I urge the City Council to not fund any more police positions, keep all alternative response funding outside the police department, and vote no to funding a community engagement police station on Philo Road. This is a message from Allison Colgrove. I'm emailing in support of Chief Boone's plan for implementing a 21st Century policing outreach programs to improve community relations, and therefore I support providing the needed additional resources to be made available to the Urbana Police Department, including for hiring additional staff as needed. To me, it seems obvious that a failure to address the current inadequate staffing of police officers could inevitably compromise the potential success of the community outreach program that could benefit our community in so many ways. I support community outreach being a top priority in the budget, including funding social workers and other outreach personnel. The mental health of citizens in crisis needs attention, and a social worker-police partnership is much-needed positive step. Implementing these programs shouldn't mean reducing our police force. Police staffing needs to be adequate for the safety of our community and to provide support to social workers to best address the needs of our community with greater chance of success. Ideally, this relationship could go beyond the public interaction and be a source of officer support to better deal with situations with citizens in crisis, and a source of understanding for social workers who witness police interactions with citizens in crises to best provide support to citizens. But at the same time, officer involvement with outreach should not lead to a reduction of officer presence in other areas. Inadequate police staffing has already had impacts. For example, local citizens are fully aware daily of things such as citizens ignoring traffic laws with officers unavailable for assistance. If the Council does provide adequate police staffing, they will provide the tools needed for cops to be able to be the best community servants they can be. Not having enough officers means increased concerns about their own welfare and potentially reduced chances for positive interactions with citizens, and could reduce the amount of time as well as mental energy for effective community outreach and compromise interactions. So if the Council truly wants better police-citizen interactions, their decisions should focus on ways that officers can feel supported and valued to create the space for them to be the kind of cops we all want, including the cops themselves. Ones that seek more positive interactions with the public and at the same time handle difficult situations as professionally as possible. We all need backup in life, but police officers that are facing unknown situations every day need it more than most. Last year, when Montreal Emery was killed by another Urbana student, the painful grief began for many and continues today. Chief Boone's plans for community engagement by police officers could perhaps be an effective means to help prevent incidents like this. I believe that adequate staffing for community outreach programs that involve both police and social workers can begin to create the relationships and atmosphere to address the needs and concerns that are currently unmet in our community, save lives, and lead to a better future for many citizens. Please consider these thoughts as you cast your vote tonight. And the last one that I have is, good evening, this is from Deshaun Williams. I'm certain that decisions about the Urbana budget for the coming fiscal year weigh heavily on the Council. While these discussions and deliberations continue, let's remember we're all coming from the same foundational belief that all Urbana residents deserve a safe and secure city to live in. How we get to that safety and security is where the opinions diverge. I hope we can find compromise and maintain respect as we move forward with a response task force model that reflects our community and provides an opportunity to build a bridge between the police and the community. I support our community's plan for alternative responses to crime, preventing it wherever possible, treating social problems with the investment and care necessary to make people less likely to turn to crime. Best regards. Jaya, do you want to go?
Yes, there are more. One point of clarification, there are some emails that came in for Tuesday's meeting, I think for people who didn't understand that it was continuation. Are those captured in the minutes already? Thank you. So just if anybody submitted public comment for last week, they will be included in the minutes, just it was a continuation. First I have is from Josu David Sisneros. Hello, this is public input for June 24th, please read out loud. My name is David Sisneros, and I live in Ward Four. I want to speak in support of the compromise resolution on the police budget that will be considered today. To be honest, I was not originally in support of this. I was one of the over 600 people who signed the petition in opposition to any increased police funding or new positions at this time. The petition and a lot of the speakers have already made this rationale clear. Crime in Urbana is down, the police budget is out of proportion to social spending in the city. We are in the middle of a huge report on community policing that the city has paid for, and we haven't gotten the results yet. There hasn't been enough community buy-in on this, and the way to create safety is through funding the social services and community organizations that are already building jobs, education, and community programs, not unnecessarily duplicating those efforts through the UPD. But all of that said, I recognize that the Council has worked hard to come to this compromise. I think this compromise is a lot better than where you started. Thank you for your hard work to get here and for your commitment to bring public input and community needs into decisions about policing. I hope you listen to the community on how it imagines safety and alternative models of community response. Next, we have one from Danielle Chenoweth. After hearing the moving public input from the well-experienced, I wanted to submit this public input to be read today. Thank you, Council, for your careful and thoughtful deliberation about next year's budget and your clear commitment to building an alternative response to 911 and other calls for help. Everyone stands to benefit from our doing this. We do not need a second deputy chief for a city our size. Barry Dunn's data supports me in this. I want to thank the youth of well-experienced for sharing their perspective and concerns, and I urge the Council to listen to them and the neighborhood and halt the hiring of community engagement officers. As Township Supervisor, I want to collaborate with the City and Police Department to build our alternative response. I appreciate the Council pausing on building alternative response within the Police Department as there's a whole body of research that needs to be consulted about where to locate alternate response to be effective. Organizations working in public health, homelessness services, reentry, mental health, domestic violence, rape crisis, developmental services, emergency response, and more, all have valuable input to give to make a strong proposal. I call on the City Council, who initiated this conversation in the wake of the biggest protest in US history, to continue to lead on this project, setting aside funds for alternate response, and the Council creating a task force that advises it on policy and funding recommendations, ultimately to be made by the Council. Thank you, Danielle Chenoweth, Cunningham Township Supervisor and Board Chair of CUPHD. I've got one more, unless you want to take it? Okay.
I think we're about at two hours, two after this one.
Okay, I'll be quick and then we'll see where we are. Dear Urbana City Council, I urge you to fund adequate funding levels for the Urbana Police. The safety of Urbana residents depends in large part on adequate staffing and training for our Police Department. I believe that Chief Boone has the vision to move our Police Department forward, but that vision must have adequate budget support. Please include this email in the public comment record for the June 24 City Council meeting. Donald Uctman, 208 Pell Circle, Urbana.
I believe, I believe we're at the two-hour mark. 10 minutes, okay.
I'll read really fast. This is, Members of the Urbana City Council, I'm emailing to support Chief Boone's plan for implementing the 21st Century policing outreach programs. Did you read this one? To improve, it's Allison Colgrove.
Yes, I read that.
Sorry.
Which one?
Jane McClintock. I don't think we've read that one yet.
I don't think so, no.
Well, there's another one too, from Julia and David Guth.
So I have one more that's marked to be read into the record. I know that we've gotten a lot of emails that aren't marked to be read into that record.
It says, "Public input, June 24th."
Doesn't say to be read into the record.
Yeah, that'll be entered into the record, but not read.
Right. We have a couple of minutes? I don't want to waste the last few minutes of public comment asking if we can read them? Can I just read it? Okay, thank you. Good evening, City Council and Clerk, please read my input into the public record. 653 people have now signed the petition stating, "We do not support hiring more police officers at this time. 385 centers live in Urbana." However, despite the fact that the outcome of Tuesday's meeting did not fully respond to that call, I want to thank you for all, thank you all for your work, your hard work, excuse me, forging a compromise. Two items still seem to be left unresolved. One, I do not see language yet in the ordinance or the exhibit that codifies the intent of the alternative response fund the Council communicated last week. It makes a lot of sense to set these funds aside as we figure out next steps to implementing this vital program. And it is crucial that, as described last Tuesday, use of these funds be dictated by the Council and only the Council, without requiring staff intervention. This is necessary to restore confidence after the Barry Dunn study's scope was altered without public or Council involvement. Two, it was apparent last week that the community outreach officer program has yet to be fully designed, and neighborhood/stakeholder input has not been sufficient. As Ms. Mitten pointed out, it seems likely that when staff is assigned to these positions, they will be able to better assess needs and design the program. However, it is unclear at this point why a physical office might be needed, especially at this lower staffing and when the program aims primarily to deliver services in the community. I urge you to hold off on that part of the budget and put those funds in the aforementioned funds so that you can vote later on how best to invest them. Thank you for your service, sincerely, Jane McClintock.
I believe that's all the input that's been asked to read into the record. Thank you, thank you all for... We move on to council input and communications. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the public for the last couple months for caring about your community. And I'm going to use my council input and communication time to ask a point of order, and Raphael, you can answer this when the time comes, but I want to deposit my question for the benefit of the audience and the folks watching at home. A point of order that any changes to last week's decisions, June 18th, have to be raised by a member of, I mean, of the winning team, so to speak, by a council member who intends to change their vote. Is that correct? That'll be answered, I guess, later, but my understanding is, in order for us to change something from last week, it has to be motioned by a council member who intends to change their vote.
That would be a question for the attorney.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want me to chime in, I guess, in a way, and at this point.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here, and this is the time for council communication, so you can prepare your answer and be prepared when the time comes, because it's related to the budget, I assume.
Right.
Okay. Mary Alice?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the public, especially those who have unfortunately suffered from crimes in their experience. I know it takes a lot of courage to come up and talk about that in the public and also on TV. I also have received emails from some people who have also experienced these types of events, who don't feel comfortable coming up to City Council. I hear a lot of passion from the public for mental health and substance abuse, and so I would strongly encourage you to go to the Mental Health Board. In addition, they have $6 million that they then give to grants to community services. This is directly funded and earmarked in our property tax, so for those of you who are interested in that, I would strongly encourage you to do that as well.
James?
I just wanted to clarify Chris's question. Are you asking if someone can make a motion that they don't intend to vote for? Is that what you're asking? Are you asking if we can, if people who voted against something at committee can make a motion?
Well, I'm just saying that, how do I want to say this? For example, if somebody wants to bring up the Philo Road and community engagement officers, they have to be, the council member has to be a person that voted for that but intends to vote differently this time. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
So you're asking if it can be raised since we voted on it in committee?
Right.
Okay.
You're asking if it can be reconsidered.
Yeah, to be reconsidered, it has to be raised by a council member who intends to change their vote.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that once a thing has been forwarded to council for consideration, I think at that point, any amendment is fair game.
Okay, let's finish council communications.
I was just going to say that, and I appreciate the thought. It kind of helps me kind of, I think, truly understand the nature of what's being asked so that when we get to that point, I can kind of give you my thoughts and opinion on it.
Any other council member communications? Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank the public again for being so engaged in this conversation, and I want to clarify, it's not in any particular one way, right? I've had lots of conversations with folks, I've received emails from people, like I mentioned before, I've had phone calls and in-person meetings, including with people with very different perspectives. And I think that's important. I think, you know, a lot of what Reverend Carr said today and last week when Reverend Dr. Underwood brought up that point, I keep thinking about our democracy as an experiment, right? I think this is a time that's really being challenged as a country. And so it's really meaningful to see people engaging in their democracy and having faith that our democracy works. I truly believe and am committed to a representative democracy, and I think it can be frustrating when people don't have a space to ask their questions, to have them answered. I think we keep hearing calls for town halls, for opportunities for people to engage in the process and have their questions answered. Some of the folks who I've had conversations with who have very different perspectives bring really important points. We can't have community conversations if we're not allowing those conversations to happen. To build trust, to be able to have something that's actually going to serve our community means letting our community, letting our residents speak, letting our residents ask questions. We're not going to come to something that everyone agrees to. There are going to be compromises, but they should be based on hearing from the people that we represent and have been elected, or appointed, or hired to serve. The residents of Urbana are at the top of the organizational chart for this city, and that is what is truly beautiful about this city, is that we are a funky, weird little community that is unlike any other community. But I truly believe that that means that we have an obligation to uphold what it means to be part of this funky, weird little community, and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to listen and be part of that. My grandparents were born into a country that was still colonized. Voting matters, and I'm committed to making sure that as long as I am in this chair, the people that I represent know that they matter. So thank you.
Any other council comments? Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes Diane.
Thanks. There's just a couple of things I wanted to share with people tonight. Number one, the passage of the budget ordinance is really the first step toward the development of an alternative response model. The Barry Dunn study, Phase One and Two that were completed so far, were staffing analysis. It was a collection of data. It was helping us understand what calls what calls were coming into 911, what police, fire, and emergency medical folks were being dispatched to. And that's really what we need to understand in terms of what people are calling for help and need services for. But now we're ready to move on to the next phase, which is what most of you have been here talking about on a weekly basis. And that will be forming very shortly. We will need to form the Collaborative Community Stakeholder Task Force that will examine alternative options, or explore options for alternative response. Some of you have already begun that outside of this room. And the stakeholders involve community members, community organizations, plus representatives from our first responders, our police, fire, and emergency medical. And that's one thing I really want people to remember, that an alternative response is not just going to be focused on police alternative response, it's going to be fire and medical as well. And there's a whole lot of exciting things happening in the medical field as well. I love the speaker who referred to organizing the resources. I couldn't agree more. We have so many resources in this community, and if you've been around here for a while, you know how many organizations and people are working here, but we're not very well organized. And we could be way better organized to form a better response to meet the needs of the people. And that's one of my personal goals for this alternative response planning, so that we end up with basically helping people who need it, and need it in a way that makes sense for them. Secondly, I want to assure folks, our budget is balanced. It was alarming, I know, during the public hearing on the budget, when you saw that revenues, expenditures exceeded revenues. That's often the case on an annual basis, when you have large capital projects for which you have saved for several years and have planned and have reserved the funds for, and now you're about to spend them. So in our case, we're building two fire stations this year. We have other capital projects as well. Just because our outgo exceeded our revenues this year doesn't mean our budget is out of balance, because it isn't. It is in balance. We're not spending more than we're taking in, and our fund balance is projected to be close to $17 million. I'm sorry that some of you were told that we spent our rainy day fund. That is false. We by our own policies have to reserve about $11 million for our emergency reserves, and we have funds in excess of that. So the budget's balanced. We're not outspending our authority. Mayor, thank you. I just feel strongly about balanced budgets.
Would you like the chair rec?
Yes, I would.
All right.
We will move on to, we have no reports of standing committees, so we'll move on to reports from the Committee of the Whole, and that would be Ms. Bishop.
On the consent agenda, on behalf of Committee of the Whole, I move for approval of ordinance number 2024-06-021, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, a 2,625-square-foot strip of land adjacent to 17 Cunningham Avenue, Plan Case Number 2490-M-24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Mary Alice? Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On the regular agenda, I move for approval ordinance number 2024-06-022, an ordinance redistricting the wards of the City of Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by James. Any discussion? I just want to thank, once again, all the public who have participated in this map. We have an excellent new ward map. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Present.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next item is ordinance, I move for approval on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, ordinance number 2024-06-023, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 9, fiscal year 2023 to 2024 estimates.
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And lastly, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, ordinance number 2024-06-024, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2024, 2025 annual budget for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
James.
Yeah, given some of the feedback that we've had and some of the discussion, I would like to confirm that any lease that we would be entering into for space, for additional space, would come before council?
Any lease that's longer in duration than two years is required to come to council for approval.
Okay, then I would like to suggest that the additional space that might be required for the staffing in this budget, that location be part, be something that's considered by the community committee, and that the location come to council for approval.
Is that a motion?
If I can make that as an amendment, but I don't know how that fits into a, it doesn't feel like a budget item.
Staff direction? Mary Alice?
Can I make a suggestion? So, based on everything that we've heard, that there's going to be a community committee task force, and that's going to, those members are going to be approved by City Council, is what I understand. Can we write something in at that time that says part of their duties is to, I'm just wondering if that's a way to achieve that goal, if I'm understanding what James is saying correctly?
Just to be clear, this, the location of this satellite station, or this service point, whatever you want to call it, longer term, I think is part of this conversation with the community about policing and how it impacts them. At this point in time, I don't see for a community engagement program the necessity for it to be in a particular place. I do understand that space is at a premium in this building, which is where the police have their offices currently, and there might need to be space to do that. I know there would definitely need to be space if we have an alternate response model coming out of a different part of the city, a different department, different organization. I just think that moving ahead with leasing in a particular location right now is premature until this task force can meet.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Currently, there is money in this budget for two community engagement team officers, rather than three. Are you asking that to fund the team without funding a location at this time?
Yeah, I don't want to be irresponsible. I know that if you add people, you have to have a place for them to work out of, and I also am familiar, I've toured the police areas in this building. I know how tight it is for space in our current model.
Correct.
So I don't want to say that we can't fund additional space. I just want the community to participate in the location where we locate that additional space.
Understood. So you would keep the funding in there with the location to be determined by, actually, the council?
That was why my question about the lease. I figured if the lease had to come before council, we would have an opportunity to talk about it, and the community would have an opportunity to talk about it before we approved it. But if we approve it in the budget, and it's only for two years at this point in time, it sounds like it could be signed, sealed, and delivered once the budget is filed. And I think that's premature. I think we do need to have public input on the location of that resource.
Grace, and then we'll have a question for staff.
Thank you. Seems to me that that would be essentially the same thing as not having it in the budget. We just had this whole conversation on Tuesday about how do we clarify, as council, what money is spent on once it's in the budget. The answer being, there's not really a way to do that, or maybe there's some creative solution that we haven't heard yet from last week. But we've already had that conversation. It seems like that's not the way to do it. Once it's in the budget, there's the spending allocation. If you want to put it in the ordinance, fine, but again, we've tried that in the past, and it didn't work. So it seems to me that it would be the same thing as putting that $45,000 a year, which I also think is absolutely very high. I don't know how it comes out to almost $4,000 a month for rent. We're not in LA. I also lived in that area, and that's not where we are. I don't understand that cost here. I think that that's not a responsible amount of money to spend on a place for two people. So I think it would make sense to just put that $45,000 a year into this alternative response pot that we are hopefully creating. And then you could have the task force that will be part of, hopefully figuring out how to spend all of that money, could also think about the location. So it seems essentially the same thing to me, as if we took that money, put it in this main pot of alternatives, figure out what to do with it, and then council has approval on it.
I do want to point out, there was an email sent to City Council on Friday from Elizabeth Hannan, which outlined a proposed mechanism for setting aside funds. I don't know if you saw that email or not, in the pro, okay. Further discussion? Mary Alice?
I know one of the discussions was having kind of a footnote on that first page in terms of the general fund. I think I would be comfortable, because it would be clear if it is needed, to have the $45,000 set aside in case space is needed for this staff. I don't want to mix it in with alternative staffing. The alternative model, and the reason is, is I don't want the public to think that we're using any of the alternative response money dollars for policing. And so I want to be clear about that.
Grace?
Just want to clarify that, the way I see it, we are using any money away from community resources into policing. That's what we're doing with this budget, is that we have, we had no money left over in the proposed budget before we whittled it away last week, and that there are opportunity costs there. So I mean, in a sense, sure, we can say, well, we're taking $45,000, and we're putting it towards this community engagement piece, so we're not taking away from community resources. But to me, that's exactly what is happening either way. It's just a matter of if you put it in that pot of money, which I hear what you're saying. But to me, it's all the same city money going towards one thing and not towards something else.
Just to clarify, there's more than, the $45,000 is not just paying rent on a space. There are supplies that the community engagement team would have, and I believe the intent is to have the clergy also, who are working with the police department, be housed there. And I believe there were some other people off and on as well, that Chief Boone would like there. And Elizabeth, did you want to clarify?
Just to clarify, included in the estimate for the community engagement team, $30,000 was the annual estimate for the rent cost for a space, and 45 was the estimated cost to make that space ready to be occupied. So that'd be furniture, it would be probably, you know, running fiber to that location so they can get on the city network, things like that. So there's actually two numbers that are part of the larger community engagement team. There's the making the space ready, and there's the annual lease.
Grace?
Thank you. I would like to propose that we amend the budget to not fund any space for the community engagement task force. I think that would be important, because if we do come up with a space, then we can do a budget amendment, and that's essentially, sounds like the same kind of mechanism that James was suggesting. I still think $30,000 a year in rent is very high, especially for two staff people. We've heard concerns from the community in the area, that that is not necessarily what's wanted by at least some who have spoken out here. And we also highlight the fact that we don't know what this program is. I just saw $45,000 for workspace. I don't know what supplies they are. I don't know what programming's going to be here. I don't know what they're going to do. So I think that there's also not really a need for a space. If the first part is to hire police officers to go around and knock on doors and see what people want, I don't understand why they need a physical building for that. There could also be opportunities to work with some of our community partners. Salt and Light has a huge building there, the Well Experience, there are others that we've seen that may be interested in partnering and collaborating. There are huge empty buildings along Philo Road still. We're building a new building on Philo Road and demolishing our old fire station, and then we want to rent something else for a high price. That just doesn't seem financially responsible to me. And I think that we could save that workspace location and come up with a better option. And if we need to do that, then we can do a budget amendment later. So again, I move to amend, to remove the funding of $45,000 a year for a workspace for the community engagement force.
I ask the audience, please refrain from applauding, so we can get our work done up here. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mary Alice?
Chris, I just want to clarify, is your intent that if the space is needed, that we don't put it in the alternative response pot? We don't put it as a footnote, it's just gone? Is that your intent?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I'll just add that again, that a budget amendment can be done if we find a space, and we decide we want to go that route.
Yes. Mary Alice?
I would prefer to have it as a footnote, rather than it being completely gone. I think it's helpful to remind ourselves sometimes of, you know, what our thought process was, and it really achieves the same thing. I just think it's nice to have that reminder, that we can go back in our book and say, this is what we talked about, this is what we discussed. It accomplishes the same goal. So I would like to, can I amend your amendment? Can I amend the amendment? No?
We need to vote on it.
No, my understanding is we vote on the motion on the table.
All right.
And if I may, I'm trying to understand what footnote method you mean.
On the general, let's see if I can find the page.
Page 47 of the general fund, fund statement.
Yeah, it's page 47, and it's right underneath general fund, the fund statement.
And is that in any way binding?
It is, it's not binding. It's just something to let us know what our intent was of those funds.
Jaya?
Thank you. I think I struggle with this, and I think, understand the intent bind it too, because there have been other times where we've made our intent clear, and that hasn't been honored. So, you know, anything that is non-binding, and this is obviously going to come up as we talk about the funding for alternative response, which, to clarify, when I put that into the first budget we have passed, it was specifically for alternatives to policing, that that was the intent, through a racial justice lens, which we're yet to see actualized. But because of, unfortunately, that experience, I don't feel confident in anything that is non-binding actually being honored.
Any other comments? James?
Yeah, I can support the intent of this, but I would want, I would agree with Mary Alice. I think we have to indicate that if space is needed, this is why we pull this out now, because we don't think the space or the location is the right thing, but that we can't ignore, in the future, if the space is needed, and we find an appropriate place for it, that we can do something about it. we can do something about it. I would suggest that, as it stands now, since Mary Alice's friendly suggestion for a change is not accepted, I'm not going to vote for it, but I am in agreement in principle.
Further comments? The clerk, please call the roll. The amendment is to remove $45,000 allocated for the community engagement team office space.
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Ms. Colossetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
Mayor Marlin?
No. That motion fails.
I think I would like to, so the public understands what the council is operating, the information the council is operating from. Perhaps Elizabeth could summarize the information that she provided in the email. What it involves is the actions taken last week, the savings generated by that, and then a suggestion for how to fence off or find a place for funding for, basically to support the work of the task force over the next year. This budget is for one year only, so this would be supporting the work of the community task force over the next year, where those funds could be that would have direct, that there would be control over. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So the revised exhibit that council members have, which I think at some point someone probably needs to make a motion to substitute that, to put it into play, reflects the following changes. It reduces the community engagement team to two officers rather than three. It removes the two community service representatives. It keeps the second deputy chief and the training surgeon, but there's no net increase in patrol officers, which is three less than in the proposed budget. And the debt for fire stations is at $9 million, so there's an additional payment from the general fund to reduce the debt. There are a couple of other corrections in there, but basically after all of those changes, there's a total of $1.4 million available while maintaining our 25% of fund balance policy, and $348,000 of that could be available for recurring expenditures within our policy limit, which is 98 points, we can have recurring expenditures at 98.5% of recurring revenue. And then there is a specific recommendation about alternative response, because I think there was a request for us to think about how that might be done. And the suggestion to consider was that that could be budgeted in a new program in the budget for the next year that could be part of the community development budget and managed by our grants manager, and that would initially be used to support the stakeholder committee planning efforts for future implementation. There were probably a couple of specific questions that would need to be answered for staff to be able to do that, including how much are we talking about and how that should be budgeted? Because I know there was also a desire to not have to amend the budget, but for example, like there are restrictions on what staff can do without a budget amendment. So for example, if we budgeted that in contractual services and later it was determined that we needed in-house staff, we don't have the flexibility to change that without a budget amendment. So that was kind of a summary of what was included for council with the revised exhibit.
And I believe the thinking behind that is through the course of the next year, when this task force is working, there will be expenses that come up. They may find that they want to bring in a speaker. They're going to be hosting town halls and community meetings. They may want to travel to different cities to explore alternative response models in different cities. I don't know. I don't know what the committee, I don't know what this committee will decide to do, but there will be expenses incurred over the next year to support the alter, to support the alternative response exploration. Jaya.
Yeah, I think I'm concerned that we're already getting away from what we discussed last week. We have some additional recommendations in terms of language that's been provided to the city council to help clarify this, because certainly there might be things that a task force is looking at. I think when we've been discussing the idea of putting this funding aside, I'm not thinking of sending community members to trainings and things like that. I want to make sure this is a conversation within our community. So clarifying again that this is something that needs to be directed by the majority of city council members. And I do, I think the information that's been provided to us of creating a miscellaneous fund, I think, you know, if we can get feedback on that, that would be helpful because if we're just right back to saying we need a budget amendment to do anything, it makes it more difficult. And what has been provided to us, that a budget amendment would be needed if we're talking about things like staffing, that is in the email that Elizabeth sent to us. And again, the intent is that council would actually have the ability to provide direct impact on this particular fund. So I would be interested in if there are any concerns in terms of the move to designate it as miscellaneous and to be directed by city council from a legal or procedural aspect.
Can staff weigh in on this? Finance director. And then Grace.
So a lot of the restrictions on what can be done with the budget without a budget amendment are contained in the city code. And the city code is very explicit that without a budget amendment, which requires approval of the council, we cannot move money between departments or between the category of personnel expenditures and other types of expenditures. So I guess I don't know how we address that. I can't make that go away.
That is helpful clarification. Thank you.
Grace.
I think we still need to find that right middle ground, because on one end, we have that it's in the budget and it can be spent however, with no council approval and no public awareness. And that's one extreme that has and does and is allowed to happen if we just put it in the budget as is. And then the other end is that not in the budget or too restrictive, then council needs a budget amendment, and we can't even allocate those funds without support from city executive. So I think that what we had talked about on Tuesday, about having the money allocated but without city executive spending authority, that it depends on council. And we have some recommended language based on last week's conversation that some members of the public have put together. I think hopefully everyone has it and passed it to Elizabeth and anybody else needs a copy. An amendment to the budget ordinance with three subsections, about one being the amount of money put aside in the alternative response fund to create alternative response program. The second subpoint under that, that the funds shall be advised by the alternative response task force. And then the third one being that the expenditures shall be directed exclusively by the majority of council members and managed by community development department without requiring a budget amendment. And I'm wondering if that language is satisfactory in finding that kind of middle ground that we're needing.
I could get, while Dave's pondering that, I would say, I, just to include this in the budget, we need more specific direction on the amount and whether it's recurring or one time. Also, I don't believe that a fund is what's needed. I believe a program would accomplish your objective. So generally, special revenues funds are created when we have sort of an external source that requires us to restrict the funds. But in my opinion, if we created a separate program, that would be an adequate restriction. I believe this, I don't have it in front of me, I believe the city code is pretty specific that we can't make a major change to a program without, again, a budget amendment, because that's how the city code is written. So if we create that program, that can't just go away or be used for something different, is how I understand it.
James.
And the way I understand it is through this, through this, these three points, A, B, and C, that item C, we can't say that a budget amendment isn't required if the funds have to change their nature from personnel to, that we can't overrule that.
The only way you could overrule that is by taking it out of the city code.
And the number here is larger than I think the recurring number that you said was available, right? Because the recurring number is...
About $348,000.
So the other thing, the other thing that we could do is we could type it at the beginning and say a certain amount is for spending from services or otherwise, and then some amount is for staffing. We could start out with a partition at the beginning, but that would be presupposing how it's going to be used.
Correct. You could make some assumptions about how you want that to be budgeted in terms of personnel line items and, you know, probably another line item for services or something like that.
Okay, so while I think this is a good attempt to try to create something that makes sense, maybe perhaps with fund replaced by program is what I'm hearing Elizabeth suggest instead, but we will, we can't do item C. The only way we can avoid a future budget amendment is by predicting how much of this money needs to be for services and how much of it needs to be for personnel. And we do have additional money that we could earmark for this as one time, because that's larger.
Mary Alice.
So I was going to make the suggestion that we make $300,000 reoccurring. We already know that we want to fund the alternative response beyond a year, but we also know that there might be some one-time costs to get everything up and running. So I would suggest 150 as that one-time bucket. It brings you very close to the 453, but it splits between the reoccurring and the one-time fees. I'm looking at how we handle the social service grants, and it is a program within the community development. It's under contractual services. So I guess, it sounds to me, if I'm understanding correctly from Elizabeth, we basically have personnel and non-personnel. Is that correct? And we can't transfer money between personnel and non-personnel without a budget amendment?
Correct.
Okay. So if we do the, basically it's 450 for next year. I think we should put the majority of it in the contractual services. But then, given that Brayden is going to be the one who's going to be overseeing this, he has a process for coming to us, going through the whole, you know, goes through a small committee. He gives the council all the options, how we went through it, how the decision was made, and then we make a decision. Now, the difference is, is that we may or may not be doing contracts. One of the reasons that Brayden brings us that stuff is so we can sign off on the contracts. So I'm not entirely sure how that would be done. I do think it requires like a vote of some kind. Maybe it's a resolution. I would love to hear other people's thoughts on that. And I do think that we should set aside some money for staffing, so if we do have some costs in personnel, we have a little bit there. But granted, that would be primarily driven by Brayden. So those are my thoughts.
Grace.
I think my intention here is having that community transparency and engagement in the process. My concern is that without explicitly saying that it needs council approval to spend this money, then council and the public could wait, could very well never see it again. We could have this money, we put it in the budget and say, here's $450,000 for alternative response. And then the mayor and the departments, the executive come back and say, well, we're going to do this alternative response model. And maybe it's the exact one that we just eliminated, and there is no, there's no requirement for any further approval in there. So my concern is that by putting it in the budget without specifying in some kind of meaningful binding language, that council will not have any say on the program, as has happened in the past with the follow-up coresponder model. I understand the other side of that coin is that if it's too much, like we can't say, we can't require a budget amendment if we legally need one. I understand that. I think what this was trying to express was that council could initiate it. So if a program did, was formed by this task force, then council would have the approval piece. So for me, I think that's the important part in the checks and balances, is council approval, which is by definition, representation and transparency for the public through their elected officials in the process.
Well, that's exactly how the social service funding works, and I believe how the environmental grant program is being set up. Every expenditure out of that program will come to council for approval. And the alternative response model, which we don't know what that, or the options that come out of the committee, we don't know what those are, those will also come to council for your consideration and your decision. It won't be an executive department decision. It will be a community and council decision.
And is that written anywhere or in the rules? I need that in binding language, more than a word on it, if you want me to accept that.
Which part?
That it would require council approval for program funding. I need to see that in writing, in a meaningful binding way to believe it.
If it's run like the social service program is run that you're a part of and on that committee, then yes, it would come to council for approval. I don't understand. I'm not, I'm not understanding. It's not going to be an executive decision on how these funds are spent.
And I would like that verified in writing somewhere, that it's not an executive decision how these funds are spent. I want more than just this verbal conversation tonight.
If you set it up as a program in this department, then it will operate like the other programs do in the department. Jaya.
I think we can do both, right? We can say, you know, modifying C on this, you know, expenditures from the alternate response fund shall be directly directed exclusively by majority of city council members as, and then like, you know, reference the other, the way other programs are managed. Just to clarify, right, that that process would be followed with this as with other items within community development.
Yeah, you could write it, expenditures from the alternative response program must be approved by a majority of the Urbana City Council. Period. Is that, would that work, Elizabeth?
I suppose it could work. It might become cumbersome if there are small expenditures and every single one has to be brought before the council. So, you know, let's say there's a meeting where there are some supplies needed or refreshments or something. I don't know. I'm just, it could be cumbersome.
Gosh, I'm, Shondra, I'll give you a chance.
I mean, could we put in that expenditures over a certain amount? I mean, $500, $1,000, whatever, so that if you want to buy snacks for a meeting, you don't have to come to council for that.
Jaya.
Yeah, I mean, I think that keeping the language in the broader way makes sense, and then let's see a budget. Right? And then if we could approve a budget for the program, we say a certain amount is available for snacks, which is that the best use of money for this particular pot of money? I think that's, it's, right, it's an example, but it's also a good question, right? Like, you know, depending on where it's coming from and things like that, often there are restrictions on things like that. So I think if we keep it broad and then we have, let's see a program budget, right? Get the task force together, that can be a first item on their agenda, is to create a proposed budget for this program.
And it's the planning. You're in the planning phase is what you're talking about. Yeah. James.
I'm going to attempt to make a motion.
Okay.
Which is to... Which is to amend the, the budget, section one, to add with the additional stipulation, A, 300,000 of recurring funds and 150,000 of one-time funds, B, set aside in a restricted alternative response program to support efforts to create an alternative response program to 911 and similar calls for help and service. And B, the alternative response program shall be advised by an alternate response task force that shall be made up of community stakeholders selected by the majority of city council members. And C, expenditures from the alternative response program must be approved by a majority of city council members and managed within the community development department.
Mary Alice.
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
Sure. It hasn't been seconded yet.
I know, and then I'll second if you accept my friendly amendment. I, I do think that Elizabeth has some valid concerns about small pieces of money. So I would just like to say something like expenses over 100 have to be approved by city council. Therefore, if you need paper, binders, I mean, there's, there's small office supplies and stuff that you may need. I understand the concern that we don't want to waste the money, but I do think we need to allow for a small bit of flexibility. So that would be.
I would accept that.
Expenditures, okay.
Exceeding 100 dollars.
And all expenditures would be reported.
Yes.
As well.
So, and that, does that mean you will second it with that change?
Yes, I will second that.
Expenditures.
Can I clarify? So now that kind of C bullet point would be expenditures exceeding 100 dollars from this program shall be directed by a majority of council?
Must be, was it must be approved?
Must be approved by, by a majority of city council members and managed within the community development department. Got to keep Braden in the loop here.
Braden.
Yeah.
And can I ask a clarifying question? The intent back to be the alternative response task force shall be made up of community stakeholders. Do, does community stakeholders, does that definition include representatives from the city? Because the task force has not been set up yet, but these are the folks who are responding to calls for service.
And service providers?
And service providers as well. Is it a broad definition?
I would intend it to be a broad definition.
Okay. All right. Grace.
Just to speak to the motion on the floor, I am in support of the amendment here, which would be to the budget ordinance and I think imply creating this fund and determining the amount of money all in this one kind of amendment here. I'll go along with the exceeding 100 dollars. I see your point there, but I also see the point in transparency and that that's, that's the point, the point here is if we need to spend 100 dollars on binders or snacks or whatever, then give that information to the public and have it be in a budget. And so I'm not gonna, not willing to die on that hill over this. I think it makes sense, but also think that that's the point of transparency and accountability is to have to account and get approval for all those funds that are spent. So overall, I'm in support of this. I think creating the fund that has some flexibility and also council discretion and transparency led by this alternative task force, I think is the right way to go here.
Did we get a second?
I just need some clarity.
Who was the second? Okay. Sherice.
Okay, so what the alternative response, we're saying that the alternative response fund, funds going through the alternative response fund go through the task force? By way, uh, city coun, the city council have, because I've gotten lost somewhere in, in all of this. I need just to understand if someone could explain this to me.
James?
So the task force is going to provide advice on how these funds should be spent, and the council's going to approve them.
Approve it or disprove it?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
We're not setting up a separate fund. Fund has a particular meaning.
The program.
This is a program.
Okay, so and this program will be set up like we do our social services programs, basically.
That's to be determined by the task force at this point. But the, the type of control and transparency would be the same as you have in your social service funds.
Okay.
Program.
And so ultimately, what I'm asking as well is will, regarding the, the community engagement team that has not yet done the programming, but they need a space to work, what are we doing about that?
That's not related to this motion.
Okay, it's not related to this motion. Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to set aside 300,000 recurring and 150,000 one-time funds to be set aside for an alternative response program. Are we setting, setting up two lines, contractual services and personnel? No? Okay, that's to be determined. The alternative response program shall be advised by an alternative response task force that shall be made up of community stakeholders selected by a majority, I want to say approved by a majority. Let's say approved.
I would assume that, yes.
Of city council members and expenditures from the alternative response program. Expenditures, thank you, exceeding 100 dollars must be approved by a majority of city council members and managed within the community development department. We get rid of the phrase without requiring a budget amendment. Right. Further discussion on, we have two hands over there. Staff response.
So, so as a practical matter, I do have to put it in some line item in the budget. So I do need to know whether it belongs in personnel expense or some other type of line item at a minimum. And if, and if both, then how much in each, both one-time and recurring?
James.
I, I would prefer to see it all start out in services because I think if we're going to hire people and have them be long-term, I think that's worth coming back for a budget amendment to, to assess that.
And really, this controls only the next year, this coming year. So, Grace.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's premature to try and decide what would be services and what would be salaries. I think is, Jaz and others' points that the task force would need to come up with a budget to approve would be one of, maybe not the first, but one of the earlier orders of business for them to do. So I think it's premature to try and decide that now. So if there is a way to just keep it in the general pot for services, and then we can approve the budget, and if we need to move stuff to personnel, then we can.
So in the alternative response program, there will be a line item for services and 450,000 is in that line item. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Does that answer what you need to know, Elizabeth?
Yes, I think that's clear.
All right, are we ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll on this amendment?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I understand that the money is being put in the community development, within the, the community development department. Is it the intention of council that this task force is going to be staffed out of community development also? Because that's a different matter.
Grace.
I would say the point is that it's not staffed, that this is the community task force. So I don't think it needs to be staffed in any particular department. I appreciate the idea and recommendation of having our grants manager be an important coordinating piece of that task force and some of our other staff in emergency response. But I think that overall, it would be community members. And so I guess I'm not understanding the, the staffing part there.
Can I?
Carol.
Can I clarify a little bit? Some of it's logistics, just convening the group, maintaining contact with the group. But then there's, I, I assume there's going to be OMA requirements associated with the group. So it's also managing the minutes of the meetings and making sure that all of that is available and there's response. So it's, I understand what you're desirous of, but there are obligations of the government that we have to make sure are tended to.
James.
I think it would make sense for it to be staffed at a community development.
Chandra.
Could the task force itself choose someone to record the minute and do all that sort of administrative stuff without it being someone from the city that we'd have to pay time for out of that?
I think in theory, that's possible, but then how do you hold that person accountable? We can hold staff accountable for doing it. But at the end of the day, it's the government's responsibility to maintain the records, you know, for OMA purposes. And so we need someone who's accountable to the, the government to do that, I think. That's, that's why all the boards and commissions have a staff member who staffs them.
Sherice.
So I guess the, the question becomes, do we add, do we need to add a staffing position to CD in order to have a staff member be over that? Because this is just like the boards and commissions when we have people like plan commission, so on and so forth, correct?
So we. Yes, but it wouldn't require a full-time person. I'm just seeking to clarify, this is a, this is an evolving idea. And so I think if you anticipate that the task force is going to be convened at some point, then I'm just, I just want to be clear about.
Okay, so I'm asking this because how many staff do we have in community development that aren't already committed to doing a board and commission? Do we have anyone?
Well, that, that level of detail, I, I'm really just looking for, what, what are you, what are you thinking about here? So that when, if somebody from community development, for instance, is selected to manage this, that you're not surprised by that?
Okay.
Mary Alice.
If Braden has the time, I think it would be a good choice, a good selection. He understands the process. He's been through talking with community members. I don't know if that means that we would need to then allocate a small figure for personnel if Braden is the person who is designated to assist, not necessarily run, but assist the, the task force.
Finance, Elizabeth?
I, I don't think we would need to allocate anything additional for personnel. Braden's salary is already covered in the CD special fund.
Chandra, did you have something?
What I was going to say in Elizabeth's email, Elizabeth's email, it said that he is expected to serve on the, the committee anyway. So it seems like he'll already be there.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm just saying that, that with all the other stuff, especially when he starts having to do the, the grant stuff and so on and so forth, will we, will we need to have someone else that if, if he is not available? Because what we're, what we're talking about is that he's taking the, he's taking notes, he's keeping the minutes, he's typing it up, or maybe getting someone else hopefully to type it up. But in, in addition to his duties as the grants manager, that's what I'm, and so my, my worry is that he, is that he may need that extra, he may need some extra help just based on even trying to keep, you know, his, his, his grants manager duties together in addition to, to forming the, the task force and so on and so forth. So I, I was just, I was just concerned about what his, what his responsibilities might be and what he may need in addition to what he already has to do.
It's possible after the initial organizing meetings of the task force that, that will become clearer as far as what the personnel needs are. So that's a point when you come back to council.
James.
I'd like to move the question on the budget.
The overall budget. Grace.
Oh, I just have a few more questions and thoughts here. For Elizabeth, just a hopefully quick one. If you help me understand, the, the fire station debt, I understand it was already planned for 9 million in borrowing. Right? And then we didn't change it. I'm just confused why it was at 10, when I thought nine was the plan originally.
Correct. So, so there was a timing difference between when the capital improvement plan was completed and when the general fund budget was completed. So the capital improvement plan was showing 10 million in revenue from bonds, right, in the capital improvement fund. But in the general fund, we made a late decision to allocate an additional 1 million to, to be able to reduce the debt to 9 million. So the change in the exhibit that you have is showing that the revenue from bonds and the capital improvement fund is reduced.
Thank you. And I would like to make, I think, just one more motion to amend this budget to increase social service funding by 200,000 one-time, which I think would be a decent match to what we've put aside by this alternative response program fund. We have 200,000 for reoccurring, since we have 1.4 million in fund balance in one-time expenses. I think we have some money to add to that. We've heard a lot of requests for matching social services. This is still pales in comparison to the whole police budget and even increases. But I propose that we add an additional 200,000 to social service funding, one-time funding from the fund balance.
I'll second. Mary Alice.
So just so I'm clear, we have 300,000. We have the 200,000, which already is the amount that we, is over the amount that we just put in the alternative response pot. And now you're asking to add an additional 200,000. Is that correct?
Yes, and clarify that 300,000 is exclusively youth service grants.
Correct.
And so it would be 400,000 for all other grants in community, social services. Yep.
I mean, I would be, I would be willing to do an additional 100,000. So you have 300,000 for youth and 300,000 for other services. Going beyond that, I'm not sure. I haven't decided.
We have a motion and a second for, you repeat your motion, please.
200,000 one-time funding increase to social service funding. Which would bring it to 400,000 total. We already have 200,000 reoccurring, and then I'm proposing adding 200,000 one-time funding.
And maintain the 300,000 in youth services. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate this recommendation. I know I, I spoke previously about the importance of having a goal of recurring funds for that additional social service funding. However, I think having an additional 200,000 while we know we have funding available even for one-time is, is actually something that would be really important to our community right now, especially as it relates to housing services. As other programs that have, were available during the pandemic or the peak of the pandemic have been fading, our community is really, really struggling. We've been having a record heat wave, so getting people housed, even if it's not something we can sustain long-term. And I'm not saying that that's necessarily where these funds would go, but just seeing the impact of the loss of, of funding that came with COVID. You know, there are many horrible things that came. You know, there are many horrible things that came with the pandemic, but we also saw an incredible increase in opportunities for folks who are being served in our community to have some relief of those basic needs. And so I think if we can do this even as kind of a bridge, I think it's, it's well worth doing.
Alice wants to comment on this motion. Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Present.
Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
I think James had asked to call the question.
We are ready to call-
And point of clarification, do we need to, or were you planning to do all these changes? I think Elizabeth had mentioned that we still need to add all the changes that we have been making. Is that correct?
Correct. I've been assuming for this discussion, your starting point was the revised exhibit. And then plus minus any changes you're making now. But I think perhaps that actually needs to be substituted for the exhibit that went to committee.
Do you need a motion to substitute the exhibit?
I'll ask our attorney, but I just-
I appreciate asking me the question on this, because I guess I will share that that's not necessarily been the way I've been involved in these kinds of budget discussions heading into approval is that if at a committee level, you're, you've made changes through votes and all that, the next meeting comes with that revised budget document. Is, that is what you're voting on without having to formally say we're substituting this new item for the old item. So my take would be is you've got the revised document in front of you, right, with all the other changes in it. So today is you're voting on what that revised document, that was, irrespective of everything that came before, and now including just the changes from tonight. So I mean, I, I'll leave it to the administration to know what the history was. I've never had to have that done before, I guess, in other communities that I've represented. But if the administration or council thinks there has to be some formality, the idea of changing, you know, which document was included in the agenda for tonight's meeting, I guess I'll leave it. Yeah.
So otherwise, the exhibit just goes to, is attached to the ordinance as amended tonight?
Yeah, if the revised document included all the other changes from last week, with you, the revised document, what you see tonight included everything else that came from last week, to me, that's the document you're looking at to vote on tonight, and now you've made changes to that. So the final one is that revised document plus the changes tonight, if that makes sense.
And point of clarification, even though this wasn't posted in the packet, the public has not seen this amendment. This was not part of the published packet, so I think that might change things.
No, it's my suggestion is I, I don't know what the backdrop for this whole situation was for what's been presented to the council tonight and within the packet to know, do you need that formality now because that's the dynamic going on?
Just for clarity, can we make that part of the motion? That it is based off of the exhibit that was sent on, thank you, June 21st, 2024, and the amendments passed tonight, just to make it crystal clear?
If that's what it takes.
There are motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I understand, because what we've been working on tonight should have been what was forwarded from the committee of the whole, which had those changes in it.
Correct. Yes.
So if it helps to say this document clarifies that, I'm not against that.
I think, who made the, Chandra was the committee chair, so she made the official motion, and I seconded it.
Okay. Chandra was the, is the chair. Mary Alice seconded the original motion. It has been amended. There have been two amendments, and we're ready to vote.
Okay, so the, sorry, the amendments are fine, we don't need to remove as amended? We're just saying it's already, we voted on the amendments, and so now it is amended?
We approved the amendments, now we approve the main motion.
Okay, and the ones from last Cal are already assumed in there, even though they weren't in the public packet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The clerk call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colletti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes.
We move on to reports of special committees. There is none. Reports of officers? There are none. The item of new business is reappointments of board and commission members. Let me find my- They're listed in, they were included in the packet. This is reappointments to boards and commissions and all of these terms, most of these terms, and June 30th, 2027, with the exception of the zoning board of appeals. And that's because the ZBA terms are five-year terms instead of three-year terms. So for the bicycle and pedestrian advisory commission, Nancy Westcott; building safety code board of appeals, Scott Kunkel; community development commission, Anne Heinz Silva's and Patricia Jones; design review board, Matt Cho; historic preservation commission, Laura O'Donnell, Angela Urban; plan commission, Andrew Fell and Karen Sims; zoning board of appeals, Jo-Ange Chester. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval of all of these reappointments ending in either June 30th, 2027, or June 20th. Is it 20th or 30th?
30th.
Okay, so that's the type of, or, or June 30th, 2029.
And that's true for Karen Sims is June 30th instead of the 20th, and Jo-Ange Chester's is June 30th as well. There a second?
Second.
Discussion? Grace?
Just want to thank all the members of the community who volunteer on our boards and commissions. I know it can be a challenging process, and I appreciate people wanting to continue and encourage others to apply as well. I believe online, under each commission, there should be an application form to fill out and encourage people to look into that, especially if you'd like a more participatory volunteer position in Urbana government at various levels. So just again, thank you to our volunteers and encourage others to apply if they're interested.
Mary Alice?
So I just have a quick suggestion for future, given I've been doing this for a long time. I do know that some of the boards have like specific seats that people are filling. So if they are filling a specific seat in the future, it would just be good to know which one they're filling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noted. Any other discussion? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Did we vote?
Oh. All those in favor, can we do this roll call or? Roll call, okay. Go ahead, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And now this meeting is adjourned.